Please visit keepmaricopabeautiful.com.
Good morning, City of Maricopa. We are standing on the north side of town on State Route 347, which is the main entrance into the City of Maricopa. Over the last few years, we've seen tremendous growth with residential and commercial. As growth continues, it gives us the opportunity to do additional projects, one of which is a landscaping project down the 347. It'll go from Honeycutt Road to the north entries of town. This includes trees, landscaping, you know, rock boulders, some metal art deco. There'll be some lighted metal structures all the way down the median. When you pull into the north side of town, we're going to have an impressive monument right in the middle of the road that represents the City of Maricopa, which has been well needed for many years. This project has been years, maybe even decades in the making, with city council and citizens' requests and responses to increase the beautification of coming into town. We'd like to thank each one of you for the time, effort, and energy, and the patience of getting this done. We look forward to having this project completed by the end of the year.
Hi, good morning. This is Mayor Christian Price and Councilman Rich Vidialo. We are here at the grand opening of the new community center, which hosts a wing for the veterans and also a wing for the seniors, so a senior center, as well as a middle area that is a community center where all types of different things can be hosted, or either of those organizations can overflow into it. This is a very exciting day, as the seniors have waited long and hard for a dedicated location where they could come and socialize and play cards and do things and have a location that was truly theirs. And so, it's a very special day for them and for the veterans, and really for the entire City of Maricopa.
I just also want to thank the past and present councils, city managers, everybody, mayors. I don't want to leave anybody out, council members, but without all that prior, today wouldn't have happened. And as I said earlier, without our veterans, we wouldn't be here today. And again, God bless you, and thank you for getting us to where we are, living in this greatest country in the world.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Luis Vila, Communications Coordinator for the City of Maricopa. I'm reporting right inside the brand-new Sprouts Grocery Store with the Senior Project Superintendent Mike Kelly from AR Mays, who's been working on developing and constructing this very grocery store coming to our community in the very near future. Hi, Mike, how you doing?
Good, thanks.
Can you tell us a little bit more about the construction process and how everything's gone thus far?
It's actually been a real pleasure to work with the City of Maricopa, from the front office to the building inspectors, fire marshal, fire inspectors. It's gone really smoothly. So, here in Maricopa, you guys have done a great job, and it's been a great project so far.
And I know some people may be worried that the shelves are empty right now. So, when can we expect the actual groceries and everything to be delivered?
The next big step for us here inside the store is going to be to start stocking dry goods. So, things are going to start happening real quick.
Final question. Everyone's really want to know, when is Sprouts going to be open?
Well, I hope you're here the 25th, so that you can get your tuna salad.
I will definitely be here, and I hope to see all of you here. For all the latest developments and great things happening with the City of Maricopa, please check out whatsnewmaricopa.com. Last week, the City of Maricopa came together for the largest community cleanup campaign in the city's history. Individuals from all walks of life rallied and walked throughout their community, picking up litter and avowed to keep Maricopa beautiful. We received dozens of emails from groups showcasing their efforts to keep Maricopa beautiful by collecting multiple bags of litter during the two-hour-only event. To learn more about the next community cleanup event, please visit keepmaricopabeautiful.com.
Good morning, City of Maricopa. We are standing on the north side of town on State Route 347, which is the main entrance into the City of Maricopa. Over the last few years, we've seen tremendous growth with residential and commercial. As growth continues, it gives us the opportunity to do additional projects, one of which is a landscaping project down the 347. It'll go from Honeycutt Road to the north entries of town. This includes trees, landscaping, you know, rock boulders, some metal art deco. There'll be some lighted metal structures all the way down the median. When you pull into the north side of town, we're going to have an impressive monument right in the middle of the road that represents the City of Maricopa, which has been well needed for many years. This project has been years, maybe even decades in the making, with city council and-
Thank you for being here this evening. I'd like to welcome you to the city council regular meeting on Tuesday, May 17, 2022. At this time, we call this meeting to order and ask that Pastor Andy Lockridge from Care Ministry for the Church of Celebration, please come forward. He'll offer our invocation, after which we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led us, led to us by Councilmember Henry Wade. Please rise.
Let's bow together in prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the country you live in, the freedoms we have, grateful for the great city we live in, for the leadership you've given us. You've asked us to pray for our leaders, and so, Lord, we lift them up before you. We pray that you grant them wisdom and understanding to make decisions that are right for us as a people and under your law. And, Lord, we pray that you give them unity and harmony as they work together, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the- under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Thank you, Andy. We appreciate that. That'll take us to item number two, which is the roll call.
Councilmember Learman?
Here.
Councilmember Marsh?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Vidialo?
Here.
Councilmember Wade?
Here.
Vice Mayor Manfredi?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Great. At this time, we have no proclamations, announcements, and awards. We'll skip to item four. This is a report from the mayor and council. City council, anything you'd like to report on at this time? We'll start with Councilmember Marsh and go down the desk.
So, May has been busy for me so far. On the 5th of May, I spoke at the Maricopa High School Junior Air Force ROTC group, the two sessions, and then to an IT technology class. They wanted to know how I got here, and so, I got to tell my story. It was kind of fun. They asked some very, very good questions. And let me tell you, we got some sharp kids at Maricopa High School. On the 9th, I attended the P&amp;Z meeting, and there was some dissension, some questions from the audience about the five-story apartment complexes that are planned to go in. I expect we'll hear more about that tonight. On the 10th, I attended the Penal County Water Augmentation Authority Board Meeting, where we approved participation in a dam-raising project. SRP, APS, and others are joined together in a project to raise a dam on the Verde River by 40 feet, to give us more power for power generation and for water storage. On the 12th, I interviewed a gentleman from Maricopa who wants to get the upcoming empty city council seat, with Mayor Price leaving. And he seemed quite up to the job. On the 13th, last Friday, I attended the Canadian American Business Council, subbing for the mayor. And let me tell you, the Canadians are back. Their masks are off, and their business is on. Their primary focus is workforce and the trades and labor workforce that their companies need to come south, and Maricopa has that. Their other, their second focus is infrastructure. They're looking for affordable housing. We're building apartments. They're looking for water, energy, and capital is coming from the Toronto Stock Exchange to fund all this. In manufacturing, the dam is broken. The Canadians are coming in, building electric vehicles, and getting into the semiconductor business. This was their first quarterly meeting post-COVID, and the group was really excited to be here. The, a major project they've got coming in, Electromechanica, a car manufacturing company, is coming to Arizona. And a company called Stantec has several Arizona projects. They're very interested also in the Phoenix-Mesa Gateway Airport area. So, we'll try and lure them down here to Maricopa. I hope we get some more Canadian businessmen coming to town. That's about it. Thanks.
Please proceed. Thank you, Councilmember Marsh, and Councilmember Smith. Please proceed.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of things. The first week of May was teacher appreciation, and I know Councilmember Wade and myself actually served ICs from Bahama Bucks to the teachers at Santa Cruz Elementary, but to all of our teachers, whether public, whether charter, my daughter's a teacher. Great job. It's a hard job, but I just wanted to personally thank you from the dais as well. And then also attended the Be Awesome Beach Party. And again, I want to encourage parents. If you haven't familiarized yourself with Be Awesome, it's an organization that's against substance abuse, and it teaches them how, teaches youth how to be leaders and how to really participate in community in a positive manner. And so, they offer great programs, and I encourage you to have your children be a part of that, all the way up through high school. So, it's just a really great program, and I just want to let you know that they're very active and very good for our community. And then, one last reminder. I did remind you last time that this Friday, at the library at 11 o'clock, we're doing our luncheon learn. And for those of you who might be looking for a job, who want to understand the great resignation gap, and understand how that came about, and how different organizations are working to fill the resignation gap in their businesses and different organizations, it's going to be a great conversation. We have the At Work Force gentleman, he's an expert from Penal County, as our speaker, and a great opportunity, especially if you're looking for a job, or just have a general interest in the resignation gap and how that's being handled in the community of Penal County. So, I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mayor. Anything? Okay. Councilman Wade?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like to take a little personal privilege, if I could, for a moment. Today is May 17. My mother was born on this day, 88 years ago. Fortunately, she passed away last week. So, this day is, we'll start a series of firsts for myself and my family. First time celebrating Mother's Day without her. Second time, or first time celebrating her birthday without her. The reason that I bring this up is, she was a person of the community. She believed and supported the community, especially youth. She believed in being a positive influence. And just, just for a little point of understanding, I grew up right at, near the corner of Florence and Normandy, in the south-central Los Angeles. Also experienced a watch riot in 1964 in Los Angeles. Here was a single mother raising a male child in a gang-infested area with the determination that he would not succumb to that community, that he would be a part of the community. 385,000 babies are born every day. It's 385,000 chances to make a difference in the world you live in. I learned that from Claudia Lee Wade Mendoza, and I bring it to the City of Maricopa, because this is a great place to be. I want to thank you for that point of privilege. Thank you very much for listening. I appreciate you, Maricopa. much for listening. I appreciate you, Maricopa.
Thank you, Henry. Thank you, Councilmember Wade. Onto Councilmember Vidiello. Anything at this time? Your report? Councilmember Lierman?
I had the opportunity last week to go to Washington DC with the leadership program that I'm with, and I want to thank Mayor Price for inviting me to a meeting with our Representative Tom O'Halloran to talk about water and transportation and the progress on the pedestrian bridge here in Maricopa. So, that was an incredible event. And then, I also got to participate on Saturday at the Maricopa Police Department Special Olympics torch run and mini-triathlon, and I had the unique opportunity to put Chief Hughes in jail bail as a fundraiser. So, I had him unofficially arrested with our Explorer cadets, and then someone had to bail him out for a fundraiser. So, we just had a really great time. It was a beautiful day. A lot of hard work out there with volunteers and officers from our department. So, thank you to MPD for supporting Special Olympics.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lierman. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. It's been a crazy couple of weeks, you know, you're doing a lot of stuff. I had the opportunity to meet with a group called the Concerned Citizens of Maricopa last, this past Saturday. We spent three hours at the library going over a lot of the stuff we'll go over today with housing, transportation, and answering questions non-stop. It was a fun and exciting event for three hours. And then, this Thursday, I figure we'll be having, I'll be having a Facebook Live, which would do the same thing. We'll be going over some transportation things. So, please, please log on to Facebook, go to my page there, and, and ask anything you like, and I'm happy to answer it for you and go over with you and spend as long as we need talking about everything that you want to have discussed. It was fun. I did the junior ROTC thing, too. It was kind of depressing the last two years because we didn't get to do it because of COVID. But it's a great thing when you show up and you see these young men and women who, who just want to hear how you got to where you are and leadership skills and things like that. And I got to tell you, I think every one of them will surpass anything I've ever done in life. So, it's really cool when you see them. It makes you proud. Somebody's son was in there, and he's amazing, the way, the way they're so focused. But that's about it.
Thank you very much, councilmembers. I'll just give a brief report on my trip last week. I had the fun experience of leaving on Mother's Day, which never goes over well, but had to travel to DC. And in doing so, I was able to represent the city of Maricopa with a group of folks from the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. This is a group that we've belonged to for a very long time, and it's a very interesting group. It's a, it's a economic development organization that is, probably has about 25 employees. They're some of the smartest people pretty much on the planet when it comes to economic development. And their job is to basically seek out these large companies and, and help filter them to the state for one reason or another. And then, our job as a city is to work closely with them and take those leads that we get from them and encourage those, those industries to look here at Maricopa and to ultimately open here. And so, we've worked with them for a long time, and in, in the process, one of the things that we do is we meet with the Board of Directors, which is a group of CEOs, mayors, county supervisors, and also economic development folks from other cities. And we take this on a roadshow to Washington DC, basically. And there, we divide up into tracks, and we have an infrastructure track, and we talk to different organizations in the DC area and our government about, you know, how it is that we can apply what we're looking for with the infrastructure bill, for example. We had another track in aerospace and others in, for direct investment. And so, you know, we divide up and we kind of conquer Washington in this timeframe. Pretty interesting in the fact that Washington DC has truly been closed for literally two and a half years. Every place we went into, we went to Homeland Security and Cyber Security, a very nondescript building in Virginia somewhere, and you walk in there and there's three security guards go through security. There was the deputy director, an assistant director, and some other individual, and a sea of cubicles. Everybody's working from home still. Apparently, they will reappear in DC at the end of June. That's their mandate. But in the meantime, we conversed with, with them, Homeland Security, Department of Interior, Department of Commerce, and what was the other one? I don't recall off the top of my head. But, but our, but again, our goal and our, and our philosophy here was to say, how do we proffer some of the things locally and in this Phoenix metro region, and how do we bring those dollars back to, to Arizona? I think it's also important to, to once again reiterate what it means to have relationships with folks. You know, it's true, everybody in this room and everybody watching tonight and everybody in the city has their individual political leanings. The council members are no different. But at the end of the day, what we do as a collective body is we try and put those political differences aside and just work on behalf of the city of Maricopa. And that's probably one of the most fun things about local government, is we just get to do the work. And sometimes, we agree on things and sometimes we don't. But at the end of the day, you know, the pothole in the middle street is not Republican or Democrat or independent. It's just a pothole that needs to be fixed. That's really what we get to focus on here and something we really enjoy. But I bring up this point to you about relationships because I just think that there's oftentimes, the public doesn't know what we've been working on behind the scenes and how some of these things are really difficult to acquire. And yet, because of years of relationship building, years of expressing what our interests and our needs are here in the city of Maricopa at a federal level, we are able to acquire things that others aren't. And so, just to give you a brief understanding of that, Congressman Stanton, who used to be Mayor Stanton, who I developed a close relationship with, although we might be in different political parties, we continued to work together. When he went to Washington DC, he actually asked for help on a bill that he was trying to craft for Arizona, much like one that Senator Reed had done for Nevada. And basically, it took 150 million, or maybe Ben could tell me, billion dollars, and basically dedicated it just for projects in Arizona. And these projects then go up on the, on the docket every year. There's about 10 or 15 that are approved, and they are allowable asks between a million and $5 million. And so, just so you understand, you know, we were one of the first ones to jump on this, to help Congressman Stanton get this passed. He got it into, into a bill. It ended up getting signed by the president. And so, now, this money sits as ready to help Arizona. We have about three or four, maybe five major projects. We were the very first one, and in this first year, we were the first one to get appropriated, $3.5 million. And on top of that, we were the largest of all the cities in the state that got appropriations through this method, by which we got one of the largest shares. And we anticipate that we'll get two or three other additional projects accomplished through this method, simply because we've been building solid long-term relationships. By the same token, one of the things you may or may not be aware of is that earmarks are back in DC, except they're very much curtailed, and they're different than they were, you know, previous years. As you may or may not know, the way that Congress is able to control the, the presidential agencies and ultimately the nation is through the power of the purse. And when they approve a general budget, oftentimes, they relinquish some of their power when there was no earmarks allowed. And so, one of the things that they have brought back in a very limited fashion is that each member of Congress is allowed 10 earmarks. And they have to be in their district, and they have to sign their name to them, and they have to, you know, pass them off. Our particular representative is Congressman O'Halloran. We've worked very closely with him over the years. And in that same, same method, we were one of the ones that was able to get an earmark, one of 10. He's office, in the, in the two weeks that they allowed earmarks to come in and be reviewed by his office, I think they received 250 different requests for monetary contributions. And again, we were one of the top 10 and one of the very first, also one of the very largest. And so, these are one of the things that you get out of building relationships with folks. And it really doesn't matter on our end, you know, what political party they, they assuage, or what, what political party they adhere to. But these are allowing infrastructure projects to happen here in the city of Maricopa and not come out of your particular taxpayer pockets. Now, of course, we all pay money to the feds, and we understand that we, they're all tax money. But again, this is helping be compensated by the entire country, and you specifically here in Maricopa are benefiting from that. And so, these are the things that are going to allow the city to help grow. Doesn't come out of our particular budget, and we have several more that are resting with our senators. The senators receive, I think, 50, because again, two senators much in the entire state. And so, they're allowed 50 different projects there. And again, we're, we're getting projects done by them as well. So, again, our senators, our representatives, they know our issues, they know our needs, and it's because we continue to visit them in Washington and here, and we continue to support them, generally speaking, as elected officials, to the point in which, again, they control the power of the purse. And when we, i.e. you, the taxpayers, need something here to, to be fixed or be eradicated or be dealt with, and whether it's floodplain, or transportation, or federal rail, or federal highway, they're there to help us accomplish these needs. And so, it's why it's so important that we keep building those relationships. And so, it was a, it was a great time in DC. In order to, to meet with all these folks, we were able to meet specifically on the Hill with Congressman O'Halloran. That sounds typical, perhaps, to you all, but again, the Hill has been closed for the last two years. And so, in order to even get into Congress, you have to have a, a representative come and meet you at the security door, and then walk you back through and take you to all your appointments. And it's really silly, considering the amount of work that needs to get accomplished, but those have been the rules for the past two years. So, we're grateful to have that opportunity to get on the Hill and, and meet with our representatives and certainly have these discussions and, and see that money coming back to Maricopa, where we feel it's rightfully deserved and earned, as well as needed, in order to accomplish our infrastructure goals and desires here. So, with that, that concludes my report at this time, and we'll move on to the report from the city manager. Nothing at this time from the report of the city manager? Excellent. That'll take us to item number six, which is the Call to the Public. Before we move to the Call to the Public, I have several speaker cards. I have many of them that reference the item that you would like to speak to. Perfect. I have two that do not. And so, I wanted to find out from those individuals if they want to speak to the item that I assumed that they are here to speak on. But if not, then I certainly would welcome you up to the Call to the Public at this time. The first one I have is for Susan Bustamante. Susan, would you like to speak at Call to the Public, or would you like to speak to an item on the agenda? If you have a general comment, please come forward to the Call to the Public then. And before you start, I'll also ask the same question of Ron, Ron Angarami? And I'm sorry, what was the? Perfect. On on the item. Okay. And again, I'm, I'm assuming that item is 8.3 or public hearing 22-10. Is that correct? Okay. I, I, we'll go to that, that point, and if I miss it on anything, then we'll come back to it. Perfect. Please proceed. State your name for the record. And Susan, would you press that button on the microphone so that the green light appears? Excellent.
Hi, Susan Bustamante. Do you need my address? Last time, we had to do our addresses. Okay. So, there's a lot of familiar faces here that were at the Planning Commission meeting, which is a little confusing because it seems like with the home Maricopa plan, that it, to us, it seems as though it's already a done deal. There's signage at the property, and, and that could mean nothing. But I think there's a, just an overall genuine concern that our voices and the direction that Maricopa is going is not really being listened to, that our voices don't matter. There were a lot of objections there, and I think if we made it a little more transparent and there was a little more involvement in our community to know what we want, then we might not get to a point where we have an audience here of people that don't want this project for many reasons. One is the traffic. It has been talked about over and over again. We don't have the infrastructure necessary to accommodate so much high-density multifamily in one area. Home values, I'm a Realtor. I can tell you, that's a real thing. Nobody wants to back to an apartment building, and the market is starting to shift. Some, we're seeing that. So, that's a genuine concern that people have. And, and it just seems as though you, we come here, and I don't honestly believe anyone here hasn't already made up their mind. So, we're here to speak, but I don't think any of us really believe that there's going to be any amount of open-mindedness. And if we wanted to live in Chandler, we'd live in Chandler. We want, I think a majority of us really want, our concerns are, let's get the 347 fixed. I know that's going to be years down the road, and it'd be nice to have a few more restaurants and shopping options here. But we don't, many of us moved here for the small-town life and for affordability and housing. That's, those are big things. But I just think that nobody's asking us. What do we want? What do the residents of Maricopa really want? And I think that we should be asked, and I think we should have a voice. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comment. Please.
Yeah, my issue is that I'm really concerned about the traffic on 347, and I think the addition of additional, you know, high-density housing is only compounding that problem.
And, you know, Ron, before you go any further, please state your name, okay? Just for the record.
Oh, Ron Angarami. Sorry. I'm a resident here. So, so my concern is that, you know, I, I looked through the last couple of agendas for the City Council meeting, and I noticed that there was an absence of a discussion of 347. And it's like, to me, it's like, if you go, if you take a poll of all the people here, they would say one of the top problems, if not the biggest problem, is 347. But there's a total lack of discussion. When I listened to all of you talk earlier, even this evening, I didn't hear any discussion about resolution, of resolution to the problem of traffic on 347. And I believe that this addition of high-density housing is only compounding the problem. And we're not moving in the right direction. So, the, and the other part that's a little concerning is that when I did look at the past agendas, it's always about rezoning, right? There was a lot of rezoning, nothing about 347. So, again, I'm concerned we're not going the right direction. And the other part that I was kind of surprised to find was that when I looked at development fees, when I looked at the development fees for Maricopa, they range between like $1,000 to $2,000. But when I looked at the ones in Phoenix, they were like $10,000, $12,000, $15,000. Why are we five or six times less expensive than Phoenix for developer fees? Is this also compounding the problem? What if our development fees were competitive with, with, with Phoenix? If we charge developers $10,000 to $15,000 to put in new housing, we'd have additional money to work with, and maybe some, maybe there wouldn't be such a zeal to put this kind of housing here because it's the cheapest place to build. So, these are all things I really appreciate the City Council taking a look at. You know, I noticed from the news recently that the I-10 is, they, they raised $400 million to extend I-10 further south, right? I noticed that it was, I think, announced today that Lucid bought a huge tract of land to quadr, triple their auto production, right? So, these are great things that I'm seeing in other communities. So, there's got to be an answer here, right? Other communities are able to solve these problems. Let's do the same. So, so my recommendation is, we should have a moratorium on, on zone changes. We should put a stop to that until we have a definitive plan, a definitive plan on 347. Once you're saying, this is how we're going to do it, this is how we're going to expand the traffic, this is how we're going to fund it, and when that is done, then start adding high-density housing as appropriate to the infrastructure allows. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Again, I have a whole host of speaker cards here that when we get to the item, I'll call you so that you can speak to the item on the public hearing side. Is there anyone else that would like to approach the, the council at this time and speak to an issue that is not on the agenda in that fashion, or hasn't turned in a speaker card to me? Please state your name.
Linda Tolbert-Good.
Thanks, Linda.
And I thank you for allowing me to be here and speak and everything. I'd like to bring attention and awareness to some international policy that will gravely affect us here in our country and the state of Arizona. On May 22 through the 28th, in Geneva, Switzerland, 146 nations, the United Nations, will gather for a vote on a global accord on prevention of a pandemic. There, it is expected, anticipated, that our executive branch of our government will cede the authority, our powers, of our sovereignty, over to the World Health Organization, WHO. All this in the name of a pandemic, to direct control in a pandemic. The signing is designed to overrun the actual powers of government in different countries. Mr. Biden does not have the authority to cede control of our sovereignty to the WHO in times of a pandemic or a plandemic. Why? Because of our Constitution Amendment Number 10, and I'm going to read that. And it says, "The powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution, nor prohibited by it to the states, are reserved to the states respectively or to the people." When a president is sworn into office, they swear to uphold the Constitution and to protect the, the nation against all enemies, foreign and domestic. the nation against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Signing the accords, handing our sovereignty over is treasonous. The high courts may and should freeze any attempt to hand over our freedoms to any accords or medical tyranny. There is no law, agreement, accords that overrides our Constitution of the United States, yet the accords are or could very well be a done deal. And that could be on May 22nd through the 28th. So what are our options as U.S. citizens? And I just want to play a little clip. I hope that you can hear it.
Please hold it up to the microphone if you can.
Guys, order another round because we're staying here. Yeah, what was I thinking going back to Ant Island? I mean, we just got here and we have more than enough food to get us through the winter, right? Why go back? But there was that ant that stood up to me.
Ma'am, we need to finish our remarks.
It was just one ant.
Okay, so if it would have finished, I wanted to add some lightness to it because this is serious, but the grasshoppers in the story were the globalists trying to take over and make you do what they wanted you to do. The ants are we, the people, so we definitely need to stand up for our rights and for our freedoms. No one is coming to save us. We're going to have to save ourselves.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else at this time that would like to approach the council and speak at call to the public? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public at this time and move on to items number seven, which is the consent agenda. And just as a caveat to Ron, Ron, just FYI, we don't answer at call to the public because we're not allowed to legally, but I'm sure that when we get to some of the items on the agenda later, there will be things that are germane to what you're talking about. So I'm sure there will be answers to what you had discussed or asked or, you know, stated, and I'm sure the council's members will discuss many of those things at that time. So just so you know, okay? At this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This is item number seven. Council, we do have an amendment that has been asked of us and therefore we need to pull item 7.3 from the consent at this time. So again, if we can pull item 7.3, is there any other concerns or questions or anything you'd like presented to on items 7.1 through 7.8 at this time? Okay, seeing no one with that, can I have a motion, please? Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on these items? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to item 7.3 as we move to the item eight, which is the regular agenda. This is again, sub 2202, the mayor and city councils shall discuss and take action to approve subdivision cases. This is sub 21-50-37-43 and 47. Four final plats of the Sorento Phase Two, subdivide 102 acres of land into 455 single family residential lots. At this time, we need to have this phrase added to any motion. The property owner or homeowners association will assume responsibility for the monthly operation, operating and maintenance costs for all the streetlights within the development and adjacent arterials. And just as the memo says here, staff has been in contact with the applicant and they are aware and in support of the request by staff this evening. So is there any additional questions or concerns on this particular item 7.3 that you need questions on? No? If not, can we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve with the amendment?
Yes. Now a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to item 8.1. This is, mayor and city councils shall discuss and possibly take action on making an appointment to fill the vacancy on the Age Friendly Advisory Committee. This is for discussion and action. I believe it's Councilor Videlo's appointment. Please proceed.
Yes, so my appointee, she ended up finding the true love of her life and she ended up moving out of Maricopa. So I wish her the best of luck, Carol, and I hope she enjoys her new life. And if she ever comes back to Maricopa, she knows she's welcome back to one of our committees. So I'm actually asking a friend of mine who was on the Board of Adjustment and he was very involved in, when he lived in California. He also worked for the electrical company there in California. He's very knowledgeable about laws. He's very knowledgeable about how to get things accomplished. He's also very involved with stuff here in the city. From day one, he met with our city manager immediately. He also took the class that we have here in the city to learn about the city. So my appointee, Al, which I actually asked him to write a little bio and I think he got a little crazy because it's going to take me quite a long time to do it. So Al, I love you dearly, buddy. I know you're going to do a great job. So I'd like to appoint Al Juarez III to Age Friendly Committee. And if there's any questions from anybody, please ask and I'll be willing to have an ask it.
Is there any questions at this time? Would you make the motion, please, Councilor Videlo?
Yes, I'd like to motion to approve Al Juarez as a member of our Age Friendly Board.
Excellent. And there's a second here. Is there any further discussion on this appointment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations, Al. Appreciate it.
Al's here, by the way. Stand up, Al. Stand up.
Thank you again for being willing to serve. This takes us to item 8.2. This is the mayor and city councils are here presentation from Global Water Resources. This is for discussion only. John, please take it away.
Okay, I believe there's some slides. Getting them up. Okay, while they're getting those up, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Manfredi, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. Really, I'm here to give a quick update, hopefully, you know, 10 or 15 minutes on just things that Global Water has done in 2021, things that we're doing in 2022. And really, the, this stems from, you know, the city of Maricopa, Global Water. We have a MOU that was signed a number of years ago and has been updated a couple of times along the way, but as part of that, we provided a written annual report and I thought it'd be good to come and just provide a, you know, some highlights from that annual report and also answer any questions that might come up. So this is kind of the tip of the iceberg of things that are going on with Global Water and water resources in general. Obviously, a lot going on on that front, but you know, really the goal is just to give, give a couple of highlights. Before I get into that, I did want to, you know, touch on something that we, you know, Global Water, we hold very dearly to our heart is, you know, the safety of our employees, safety of our contractors, the safety of our customers. And obviously this weekend, you're probably well aware that there was a main break and a contractor working on behalf of Global Water was actually injured because of a, you know, a lack of following safety protocol. And so, you know, we take that very seriously. We're working with the contractor to ensure that their, their safety program meets, meets our standards and, and we don't have a recurrence of that, that event again. So I just wanted to highlight that because like I said, we do take that very seriously and understand the, you know, the disruption that happened, but you know, the good news is the gentleman is, is doing well and recovering and, you know, that's the most important part. So with that, I'll jump into my presentation here. Make sure I can, there we go. So really what I'd like to talk about tonight, just quickly, just give kind of a highlight of some of the numbers from last year as they relate to Global Water. Highlight some of the projects that we completed in 2021, some that we're working on in 2022. Quick water resources update, certainly just like I said, the tip of the iceberg there. We have some developments on the rate case, like to share those. And then finally, updates on our customer assistance program and really just kind of promotion of that because I think it's a great program and like to get the word out on that. So quickly, just kind of to highlight some numbers of the past year. So within the city of Maricopa, we added about 1,700, almost 1,800 connections on the water side and similarly, almost 1,800 connections on the wastewater side. And just for context, you know, the typical home is considered a water and a wastewater connection, so that would be two connections there. Pumped 2.7 billion gallons of water last year for, for the residents of Maricopa and the businesses here. So pumping a lot of water, but also, you know, we continue to, to focus on our conservation and our recycled water program. And so since, since Global Water's inception, you know, around 2004, we've saved over 10 billion gallons of water by using, you know, the recycled water that we use. So that helps keep that, that water in the ground that can be used for, for future use and future growth. And then lastly, just like to highlight, you know, our capex program. So investment into the community was, was nearly $12 million last year. We expect it to be 12 million, probably more this year as well. And that helps us stay out in front of growth and, and ensure that we can provide the water and wastewater services as growth comes to town. So again, a couple of highlights on the projects that we worked on last year. Again, just a few of the, the bigger ones. One of the big ones was the exceptional health water and sewer line extension. So that was kind of a quick-moving project. We had to, had to move quick on our end as well to, to ensure that we could provide water and wastewater service to that, to that project. So we had to extend about a mile of water and wastewater lines to, to that facility. You know, I think the, the tangential benefit to that is there's a number of properties along the way that will be able to use that infrastructure as well if, if they choose to and also for future growth that, that infrastructure is now in place. Similarly, on the Desert Sunrise High School Water and Sewer Line Extension, so that was about a mile and a quarter extension that we had to, again, move pretty quickly on because that was another high priority and quick-moving project. So we got, we were able to complete that. And similarly, kind of in the southeast portion of, of Maricopa, that extends, extends our utilities a little bit further down the road and there's, there's obviously a lot of dirt moving in that part of town and a lot of activity. So that helps bring our utilities to that, that part of town as well. And we're a little bit closer to, to some of the future growth that's out there. Our water and sewer master planning projects, so that's, you know, like any, you know, utility, the city I know has your own master planning efforts as well. So, you know, we, we updated our, our existing water and wastewater master plans to ensure that, you know, we have kind of a roadmap for the, for the next five, 10, 15 years of the infrastructure that we need to build, wells that we need to drill, storage tanks, booster pumps, all those, those things that we need to, to ensure that we're, we're staying out in front of growth. And then lastly, you know, we, we have to go to the Corporation Commission to add new properties into our service territory. So we had a number of requests on that. It's called a, obtaining a certificate of convenience and necessity. And so we were able to obtain a few of those for some large projects, one being the England Dairy or Moonlight Ridge. That was a, a large project along with North Estrange Inn and the Maricopa 160 Project. A few projects that we're working on for 2022 that are, that are actually already in motion or frankly finished. The first one is Honeycut Main Liner Project. So we've done a few of these main liner projects and really the goal of those, we have several areas where the existing infrastructure is susceptible to main breaks, Honeycut Road being one of the, the primary areas. So we're, we're extending, we're essentially inserting a liner inside that water main that is, it's made out of Kevlar, it strengthens, it gives additional strength and integrity to the water main and prevents it from, from breaking in the future. And so that's occurring right now with the Honeycut shutdown and it's approximately from the, the bridge on Honeycut to White and Parker. We're also looking at doing a similar project that won't require a road shutdown from, along Honeycut that's at the, the entrance of Rancho Mirage heading to Hartman Road. So, so those will help prevent future main breaks. We've also, we're working on and completing the, the water main extension from Loma Road, from Loma to Green Road on SR 238. Again, that will help serve the England Dairy Project and also the, the water park coming to town and also gets us a little bit further down 238, closer to Apex and, and some of the growth that may come to the, the west side of town. And then lastly, we're working on what we call our Meadows Well and Water Distribution Center. So this is an existing site, but we're drilling a new well for additional water capacity and bringing that tank, rehabilitating the tank, adding some booster capacity to that area. So, so there's a little bit more booster capacity and also will help serve additional developments that are planned to come to that area. Okay, kind of transitioning, excuse me, transitioning to, if I can get this to move, to the water resources side. Again, just, just quickly, a few items there. So as you're probably aware, we have what's called a designation of assured water supply. We call it a DAS for short. That DAS allows us to use up to 23,000 acre-feet of water per, per year here in the city of Maricopa. Last year, we used about 7,400 acre-feet of water. So we're, we're using about a third of that capacity. And I'll talk about it here in a minute, but you know, although we, we certainly have room to grow, we're, we're doing a lot of work right now because we know five, 10 years down, down the road, we, we want to be prepared for, you know, what, what the future brings in terms of additional water needs. So we're, we're planning for that right now. One of the, the efforts last year was also working on SB 1274. So that was, that was a joint effort. We, we obviously had a part in that and through the passage of that, it helped secure our designation of assured water supply and kind of add some, some security there so that's not taken elsewhere. We are accelerating what we call our four-by-four concept and really what that is, is it's kind of four major areas where we're planning on land use planning and irrigation, water rules, law and policy, kind of our next step on how we're going to use recycled water. Are we using it in the best manner possible? Are there, are there better ways to use it? And then also again, looking to the future for water acquisitions and where do we obtain the next source of water once our designation of assured water supply is used? And then the last thing I'll highlight for, for 2020, so again, we, we promote our, our water conservation tools and our advanced metering infrastructure and, and our customer portal. And so through that program, we were able to send out 11,600 leak alerts and we estimate that that saved customers about 11.2 million gallons of water. So again, that's water that we can use for future use and also saves customers money that they likely didn't want to spend anyway. So, you know, we, we think that's a great program and we really try to promote it so people are aware of it. So the year ahead on the water resources front, a couple of things to highlight. So we've, we've been working again with Pennell Partnership and a number of entities on what we call the Basin Study. So that's a grant through reclamation. It's 1.3 million, I believe, that we've been working on for the past three to four years. So there's actually a meeting this Friday, the final partnership meeting on that. And then there's a few more steps left on the actual report writing and review that will likely take about nine months, but that process will be wrapped up and we'll, we'll again, provide some valuable information on, on how to use water resources and kind of the next steps within Pennell County as a whole. I talked about the four-by-four plan, but a few other things that we're trying to work on within that plan. Again, I mentioned water acquisition, really looking forward to the future and, and how do we ensure we have water resources that we need to allow the town to, or the city to continue to grow years into the future? We're also working with city manager Horace and his staff on potential water or efficient use of landscaping and ordinances along those lines. And, and again, how, how do we stretch the, the water resources that we have right now as, as far as we can into the future? And then lastly, for, for existing lands that allows landscapers to come in and really learn how to, how to design and maintain efficient landscapes and, and again, conserve water. Okay, shifting gears, just to talk about the rate case briefly. So a little bit of kind of the, the history on the rate case. So again, that's, you know, we submitted our rate application in August of 2020, which I believe most of you are aware of, and that was based on a 2019 test year. So 2019 expenses and investments. We had a, a hearing with Arizona Corporation Commission that wrapped up in September of 2021. We expected to receive kind of the ruling from that hearing in February and we, we hadn't received it until late last week and we, we did receive what they call the recommended opinion in order from the judge as of last Fri- Thursday or Friday. And what that ultimately means is we'll likely be on the open meeting in June where the commissioners will vote on approving or modifying the, the recommended opinion in order. And ultimately, based on that meeting, then rates would likely go into, to effect in, in July or August if, if any changes were made or approved. Again, we, as part of our MOU, we, we have agreed to phase in any rate changes to, to no more than 5% per year. We don't frankly expect it to be much more than that, so it would probably be no more than a two-year phase in if, if that. So that's kind of where that stands right now. More to come, subject to the, what comes out of the open meeting. All right. And then the last thing, again, I just wanted to, to highlight our customer assistance program. You know, I think this is a great program, really like to get the information out to the community. It's a, an assistance program where customers that receive both water and wastewater services can receive up to $700 in assistance per year if they meet certain criteria, eligibility criteria and those, those criteria are low-income, deployed service members, disabled veterans, furloughed workers or medical hardship individuals. And so again, it's pretty broad and, and, you know, quite a few people can, can qualify for it, but it's, it's a matter of, you know, applying for and getting that assistance. So in 2021, we were, were able to issue about $82,000 in assistance to, to people in need. So, so that's it. Really, that's kind of my update. Again, kind of just it. Uh, really that's kind of my update. Again, kind of just topical, but, uh, open to any questions that, that you might have.
Thank you, John. Counsel questions at this time? Yes, Councilor Wade.
Evening, sir. Thank you very much for briefing. Not, not a, a question, but a comment in reference to the, uh, consumer assistance program. I'm so happy that, uh, you guys were on board with that to help people that were in need and were getting, having water turned off. And I want to thank your staff for turning water back on after they were informed of what was going on with that individual customer appreciation. So thank you very much. That does volumes, I think, for the city and for Global Water as well.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Marsh.
John, um, are there, are there still some seats open in the SmartScape program for, for developers and, and, um, landscapers?
There are, uh, plenty of seats. So, um, there is, there is a, a nominal fee and, um, you know, Global Water we're offering, you know, a essentially, uh, a scholarship to, to cover that fee. So if, if anyone here, you know, that's interested, you know, you can get, get in contact with me or Jake Lender King or, um, anyone else at Global Water. We can get you the information on that.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, Councilor Lierman.
I just wanted to let you know that I found your website really helpful. And if you haven't been on their website, there's a lot of great information. There's water-saving tips. Um, I also got a leak alert. So thank you for that because I was notified, um, and was able to take action and save water. Um, and I too applied you for the customer assistance program. So just thank you for serving our community in many different ways.
Thank you.
John, I have a series of questions for you.
Okay.
I'm going to put you on the spot here.
All right. I'll do my best.
My apologies ahead of time. Um, ju- just first off, I, I would like to make a statement though. I mean, um, you know, I, I have to give Global some props in the fact that, um, you know, the city and Global had been odds, at odds many times in the past. Uh, communication was terrible. Things didn't go on. Uh, that has improved a hundredfold. Uh, and I think that, that Global deserves some props in the respect that we gave feedback to Global to host a, a, a series of open houses where they would explain how things were done and, and why they were doing it. And, uh, you know, those that attended, I, you know, I went to some, I know other council members did. Uh, I know the constituents that attended had a phenomenal opportunity to really learn how and why Global operates the way it does. Um, and I, and I want to, I want to lead off with, before I get to my, you know, a little bit harder questions, um, I want to lead off with a statement that when I was sitting in the Department of the Interior, and this is more for the, for the congregation here or the, or the audience, um, when I was sitting in the Department of the Interior, I was sitting there with, um, CEOs of SRP. I was sitting there with, uh, CEOs of other major industries, Intel, um, uh, high water users. I was sitting there with mayors of other cities who have municipal water companies. And while we often talk about the disparity in pricing, uh, you know, eh, eh, what others pay versus what we pay, um, as we question the Department of Interior about the potential drought, uh, issues that are coming down on the state, uh, as we deal with the other 11 basin states, um, one of the things I think that it's of note to the, to the public is that, you know, I ask specifically about some of the ways in which, you know, we could do better. Uh, we could save more water, things that we could do. And I, I have to admit that, that when the department director or the secretary of the interior answers me back with literally everything that Global is doing, whereas all the other people in that room, uh, were flabbergasted. They didn't have smart meters. They didn't do notifications. They didn't do, uh, the reclaim that, that we do here. They, they didn't do, didn't do, didn't do. And, and one of the other things that I was able to express was that, you know, Global is one of the very first companies in the state of Arizona to do a tiered water system that says based on the amount you use, you pay more for the usage, therefore incentivizing conservancy. And, uh, they had said that that was something that they were suggesting to all of the state and others as well. So I just, you know, as much as I, I just want to convey to the audience that Global has taken that lead in, in understanding this is what's upon us. This is here. This is coming. But at the same time, they literally are doing everything the Department of Interior had suggested to a roomful of people that were not doing any of it. If, if they were doing something, it was one thing. And so, you know, I, I think that speaks volumes for where we are as a city of Maricopa versus the rest of the state and the rest of the municipal companies. And those things are coming and they're coming hard and fast. And it's going to cost those people dearly as they have to go through and make those changes very quickly, whereas Global's been doing it over the last 20 years here. Um, that leads me to my questions. So John, can you, uh, discuss just briefly, you know, you talked about the basin study, but when the people hear that we're in a drought contingency or we're going into this drought issue, you know, the first question that comes to their mind, and I get asked this question all the time is, A, are we going to have water? And B, how can we have growth when we don't have water? And, and I was wondering if you could, while you had addressed it through the DAS, I was wondering if you could kind of simplify that. And I know this is a complex topic, but simplify it for the average person to understand how the growth here in Maricopa is potential and possible, even something like a water park wherein, uh, it uses water, but yet we have a conservancy issue as well, whereas we conserve 90% of the water that we utilize. So can you talk a little bit about that, just so the public understands it?
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do my best, uh, to, you know, it's a, obviously there's a lot to it, but, um, I, I, I think, I think to your point. So, you know, as, as a company, we really tried to build a foundation of, you know, water conservation and, and we really believe that being able to, you know, every, every gallon that we can conserve and, and frankly, keep in the ground, that's a gallon that we can use into the future. And as, as part of what, you know, the designation of assured water supply, but basically that's, that's the, the right for us as, as, uh, as a utility to, to the water that's in the ground. Um, you know, that's, that's a very sophisticated process based on modeling and, you know, aquifer depths and, and things along those lines. And, and, you know, so again, it's, it's the Department of Water Resources ultimately approves what, how much water we can, we can pump in this area. And, and, you know, the city of Maricopa sits on a, on a good aquifer that, that has a lot of water in it and it's, um, you know, replenishes itself. And frankly, you know, as we've, we've pumped water over time, we're not seeing, you know, drawdown of, of our wells. And, and, uh, you know, so we're really, we don't have the, the impact that we, you know, you see the, the conversation around the Colorado River and, and the impact that that may have on other communities because we are solely on groundwater. Now there is, you know, the, the impact it may have ultimately on agriculture and, and that may through the long term have, have, uh, you know, some impact on groundwater here in the community. But, but I do think we really have a, a strong aquifer here that's going to, you know, provide both for what we have now and, and growth into the future, um, for, for this community.
Thank you. And I, I think I just wanted you to, to touch a little bit more on, you know, there's surface water and there's groundwater. Those are the two water sources that we utilize. And so, you know, one of the mayors asked me directly, um, and said, are you going to be affected, you know, city of Maricopa by the drought and, and the cutbacks on Colorado? And, and while I said, of course, we're all affected because water is a precious resource, I said innately though, we are not because we are primarily on groundwater and we have this large assured water supply. And so therefore we have room to grow as well as room to, to continue to, you know, and I, I think your point there that you said was the most important is that, that aquifer continues to recharge, whether it's reused water that's going into it or, or, you know, the, the flow underground that is that underground river that's, that's flowing into it as well. And those are really important points, I think, that, that the public needs to understand when understanding how Maricopa is different than the other cities that surround us than the county and even the state that, that we live in.
Yeah. And that's, you, you know, again, we are fully on groundwater here in the city of Maricopa, um, our, our global water provides. Um, and, you know, we do have things like excess recycled water in the winter time. So we're looking at opportunities to, to recharge that, continue to replenish the aquifer, um, and essentially save that for a later date to, to be able to use. Um, and, and again, kind of allow additional growth to, to continue within the city of Maricopa.
So the next question I have for you is a little more hypothetical, but it is something that I think is also important for the public to, to understand that, that you and that we as electeds are looking into. Uh, Governor Ducey has talked about it, but we, we talk about additional water supplies. When I was meeting with the Department of Interior, that's what they kept saying is we have to have additional water supplies. Well, we're a desert state. We understand that. We've always understood that, but yet we can't make it rain more. We can't make it do it. So there are things in technology that are, that are happening. Uh, with the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, I once went on a, on a tour basically with, uh, uh, the ambassador group. And we've, uh, went to this company that literally has machines that pull moisture out of the air, even as dry a climate as, as in Arizona. And they capture that water and it's fully drinkable, et cetera. Now it's not based on a commercial usage yet and couldn't supply, you know, acre feet of water. But I think that's an interesting, you know, segue to the, to the technology. So is desalinization. And, and I know that, you know, as a state of Arizona, we're talking about, you know, working with Mexico to create a pipeline to Mexico where desalinization plants, you know, will happen in the Gulf and then pump that water up north. There's also, you know, I asked the Department of Interior about pipelines to the Mississippi, things like that. Um, can you talk a little bit about kind of Global's vision or, or thoughts or ideas? And while you don't control all that technology, uh, you know, or all those political wills, certainly can you talk a little bit about how additional water sources are needed? What we're looking for? What you're looking at? What is the trend in the industry? How do we bring additional water to Arizona?
Yeah, that's, um, that's also a, a tricky and complicated, uh, question, but, but certainly, um, you know, I'll hit on the point again, conservation is, you know, every, every gallon we can save today pushes that, that need down the road. So that's why we think conservation is, is, is critically important. But, but there are other water sources, whether it's, you know, the Harkaway La Valley are, has, you know, a, a very large aquifer that could be, be pumped and brought to, um, communities within the Phoenix metro area, city of Maricopa. There's, you know, you, you did mention things like desalinization, wheeling water. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of ways to go get additional water sources, um, even, you know, recycled water and ultra purification of, of recycled water. And, and so we're looking at all those options, trying to understand it. It's like anything, it's a lengthy pro- process and there's a lot of infrastructure and, and planning that goes into it and permitting. So, so that's why we need to start the process now versus waiting, you know, to, until our DAS is almost used up, uh, to, to start that planning. And, you know, we, uh, we're trying to stay out, stay out in front of that as the, the best that we can. So.
And lastly, I would just, I would just talk about, you know, in Arizona, there are rules and regulations, uh, in order to preserve water rights for different people in different segments, different areas. Um, you know, there's an age old adage that you've probably heard before that whiskey is for drinking and water is for fighting in the West. That's just how it boils down. And, and the fact of the matter is, is that, uh, we have these rules set, situated by the 1980, uh, Arizona Groundwater Act that stipulate the movement of water around the state. And so you talk about the Harkaway La, and for those of you who don't know, it's a very large basin underground, uh, that has been not only preserved but pumped full of additional waters in years that, that were, um, not lean here, but, but rather, you know, overflowing. So we could save for the future. Yet we have a challenge in the fact that we are not allowed to move that water very much around the state. And so can you just talk about the need for additional legislation so that as we progress into these harder times ahead where there will be asked of every municipality and every farmer and every person in the state to conserve and preserve and, and also at the same time, you know, be able to have, uh, for our children's, children's, children that water. Can you talk a little bit about the legislation that, that might need to be, you know, adjusted or, uh, adjusted in some fashion so that we can move water around?
Yeah, that's, that's probably, um, an area where I'm, I'm not as well versed as, you know, Jake Lender King or, you know, our senior vice president of Water Resources and Legislative Affairs. So, you know, that's something that I'd be happy to, to work with Jake and, and potentially set up another, you know, time to come in and probably get more in depth on, on some of those specifics. But, um, I, I, I know enough to be dangerous, but I don't want to, you know, say something that's inaccurate and I feel a little under com-
Sure. I, I think my point there more than anything was simply that, that we will have to, we'll have to address legislation in this state, whether it's, you know, from us or from the body in the audience, you know, talking to our, our elected representatives at the state level so that we can talk about the need for moving that, you know, those, those water resources around so that everybody can have something versus, you know, pockets or of people having nothing.
Yeah. And I think that, that's where, you know, Global Water, Councilmember Marsh, you know, these, these groups that, uh, that we have here in Pennell County are, are, you know, really focused on addressing local issues, but also with the legislature and, and others to, to ensure that we have, you know, laws that, uh, that help us in, in terms of our water resources. So.
Perfect. Any other questions, counsel, at this time? Global, anything? Yes. Go ahead, Councilor Wade.
I just have one, just got a curious question in reference to the rate case. Um, do you feel like you were given a, a, and a good shot, if you will, by the corporation commission that it was fair and equitable with you to, as you were going through the process?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a very lengthy process. Um, you know, as you're well aware, we, we kind of have to provide every bit of information that we have as a company, our financials, capital investments. Um, and so, you know, it's, it's been a process to, for them to evaluate, uh, the consumer advocate, advocate to, you know, also evaluate, uh, our, our utilities as well. And so I think to this, this point that we're at right now, it's been, you know, eh, kind of a give and take. And, uh, you know, I think everything in life is a little bit of a give and take. And so, um, we'll see kind of the, the final resorts, results a- after the, uh, the open meeting. But, um, you know, I, I do think it's been a, um, relatively fair process. Yeah.
Good. Good. Thank you.
Anyone else at this time? Okay. So, you know, and thank you very much, uh, John. We appreciate the, uh, information. We look forward to hearing more from you in the future. Uh, that'll take us to item 8.3. This is a public hearing 22 dash 10. The mayor and city council say our public comment regarding the request by Don Leek and of Shelter Asset Management on behalf of property owner Eldorado 27 LLC to amend the general plan, future land use map and planned area development, P A D 22 dash 05 for approximately 25.3 acres generally located on the northeast corner of North Porter and West Applegate Road, just north of Maricopa-Cassagrand Highway. And again, this will be a public hearing. So let's start with a presentation, after which we will move to the speaker cards that I have here and we'll go to that point. Please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Manfredi, members of, uh, the council. I'm Derek Shear. I'm with the, uh, planning department. I'll be presenting this case before you tonight. The request here is, uh, for a general plan amendment and a P A D zoning. The general is requested by Don Leek of Shelter Asset Management on behalf of Eldorado 27 LLC. The general plan amendment was a, an amendment to the future land use map. The existing future land use map designates the property as public institutional and mixed use. Uh, the applicant is proposing to change it to mixed use. Uh, currently it is split almost down the middle between public institutional on the north side and mixed use on the bottom. This is cleaning up that zoning line. Then accompanying this is a, uh, zone change application from the existing light industry and warehouse CI1 designation to a planned area development. And if I can get the slides to work, my apologies. Here we go. So here on the left, we can see a, uh, site location map. Uh, the site is located, uh, just east of, uh, the Walmart along, uh, Porter Road there, just north of, uh, Maricopa-Cassagrand Highway. The site encompasses 25.3 acres. Right now it is currently vacant. Uh, again, the proposed use for it is a, a mixed use, uh, with a planned area development, uh, zoning. The applicant proposes to build a multifamily, uh, development on the site consisting of 536, uh, units. Uh, there'll be a mix of one, two, three bedroom units across six buildings. Buildings will be, uh, four story and five story. There'll be, uh, four, five story and two four story buildings. Uh, the proposed density, uh, for the residential portion of it will be 28.5 dwelling units per acre. The required parking for the site is 843 spaces. This is considering the 20% uh, incentive bonus for doing sustainable development on the site. Otherwise it would have been 1,054. The applicant is proposing 918 spaces on the site, which meets the code with that incentive. The applicant is also proposing to provide 18, uh, EV parking spaces now and then another, uh, with another 12 that are, uh, pre-wired for future need at the site. So i- it's going to be a sustainable site that attract a lot of different, uh, applicants for residing in the buildings. We can see as I noted before, that the site is almost split right in half with the, uh, general plan with the north side, uh, being the public institutional P. I see it on the left and on the right, you can see what they're proposing to pull up that mixed use designation from, uh, the south and from, uh, on the west side and unify this. This works as, this acts as a buffer. Uh, we've got the mixed use between the public institutional and then the other commercial and the employment uses and also the high density residential above. North of that is, uh, we get into the single family. The existing zoning is, uh, light and industry and warehouse. Uh, and with the proposed P A D, the proposed P A D, as in, uh, noted in the staff report, uh, and also the P A D booklet that was presented to the council, very closely follows the mixed use M U G designation, uh, uh, base zoning standard. There are a few deviations in it, uh, variations that have created this P A D. And offset on those, uh, variations have been, and a 3% increase in the amount of open space on the site, uh, a rather robust amenity package for the residents, for the residential portion of the site, uh, that really is beyond what we've seen before with the other multifamily developments in the city. In 2018, uh, the city adopted, uh, their housing plan. This is a, a 10-year housing plan. Uh, the process for this housing plan, uh, went from January of 2017 through June of 2018 with ultimate adoption in, uh, July 17th, 2018 by the council. Uh, through this process, the housing needs were, for the community were assessed. Uh, planning department in the city went out with their online surveys, in-person surveys, focus groups and meetings, uh, with the public, stakeholder interviews. focus groups and meetings with the public, stakeholder interviews, five workshops. There was a public design charrette, four presentations to the city council. Through all this gathering, what is the housing need of the city? And through that process, the council adopted the housing program. So the city identified a need for other housing options other than single-family residential with needing 25% of the total housing to be multifamily. The city housing inventory for a single-family right now is approximately 70,400 entitled single-family residences. That's entitled meaning approved by planning, approved by the council. It's just ready to get built. It hasn't been built yet, but it will be. Right now, completed units are 24,345, and this information is about three months old. We have had significant development since then, so that has gone up. The housing inventory for multifamily residential is 2,135 entitled with only 670 built so far. The need for multifamily to make that 25% that was in the adopted plan is 6,253 multifamily units. The city currently has about 1,738 multifamily units in various stages of land use entitlement. That includes this application. So that means they're in the pipeline through planning and zoning, going through the review or they're going through the permit development process or they're under construction. That includes all of them, including this application should it be approved. So all of this data was put together through the Greater Phoenix Economic Housing Council with Elliott Pollak and Company presenting that data. There's a gap in the workforce housing. You can see here, this is the affordability by occupation various cities around the valley of 2020, 2021. In red, you can see that workers with that salary can't afford either one-bedroom, two-bedroom or to buy a single-family house. You can see the stark difference between the 2020 to the 2021 where firefighters, high school teachers, elementary school teachers, they've all been priced out of the affordability of a single-family residence, so they need to rent. And this is including, you know, members of the community here. Funny enough with this, Monday, planning had a call from someone who was an admin at one of the schools who rents a house here, has lived here for a few years, she said. It was another planner who caught the call and asked us about the multifamily developments that were going up around the Walmart area and if we had contact info to be able to put her in contact with them so she could get on a list to rent because she's being priced out of her single-family house. And it was just a little coincidental. It was like, okay, wow, this is going on right now and we're presenting a multifamily case here to the council about this. Now, this was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their April 25 meeting where they recommended approval for it. At the May 9 Planning and Zoning Commission, the development review permit for this, for the residential portion, was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission at that meeting. A good number of the public came out in opposition to this and there was a lot of discussion and a lot of it was, opposition was about traffic in the area. And staff put together from the TIA, the Traffic Impact Analysis, for the project, pulling out the data for the site. Now, the multifamily portion that you see highlighted in red, over 18 acres, that's a 536 apartments there. They'll have a daily generation of 20, just over 2,500 car trips a day. The other mixed-use portion were considering a retail shops, two pads that would be various restaurants. All totals about 5,375 trips per day. That's under the P A D and under the proposal by right under the Light Industry and Warehouse for the site. There's a list of a number of different commercial-type uses that could be their hotel, a major garden center. A major garden center, say like Home Depot with the garden center looking at 90,000 square feet of retail with that 30,000 square feet of home center. That alone is 7,000, almost 7,200 trips a day. But overall, under the Light Industry and Warehouse, it would be about 18,000 trips per day that would be generated for those various commercial uses compared to what's being proposed under the P A D. This is a significant downzoning of the site. Under the Light Industry and Warehouse CI-1, you can see a stark difference between major commercial, major traffic or the multifamily with the mixed-use component with the connection between the multifamily and the retail and the restaurant there. It's really significant downzoning and traffic impacts for the area. Just for comparison, the home of Maricopa project overall, 2,500 trips per day. The gas station at Porter and Honeycutt is 2,280 by itself. The Walmart across the street, approximately 10,000 trips per day. And the new Burger King that's going into the Wells right next to the Walmart, it's about 1,600 trips per day. And when these analyses are put together by the traffic engineers, they're not looking at a site in a vacuum. What they're looking at is the proposal of the site, all the development that's already there existing all around it in a given radius. And then what they also look at is the zoning. They look at the zoning with the highest and best use of what that zoning is. So under this CI-1 Light Industry Warehouse, they're looking at worst-case scenario of what this could be put there by right. And then they put all these numbers together and do that analysis of how it goes and how it's going to affect the local road network. And through that, the applicant worked with the city engineer for developing ways for access to the site. The main entrance to the site, if I can go back two slides, I can show you. The main access is right where the yellow and red line in the middle connect. That is right across the street from the alleyway that's behind Walmart. There'll be a secondary access on the south side that'll go through the mixed-use commercial. At the very bottom of the yellow line, that is the entrance to the Walmart parking lot there. That's going to be a full signalized light there. There can't be another light just north of that, the main entrance, because of the proximity of those lights. You need to space lights out to be able to have traffic stack, go through the light, you know, spread out more, then hit another light, stack back up and then go through. So the capacity right now of Porter Road, we're looking at 757 vehicles per hour at the peak times. The design for Porter Road is 1,800 vehicles per lane or 3,600 vehicles per hour. Porter Road right now is about 21% of its design capacity for traffic flow. Pardon me, this button is a little sticky. So looking at the capacity for Porter Road at the intersection, so we have the Porter Road and Adams Way westbound, current delay is about 50 seconds. What you see here is the delay in seconds, the current, opening year 2024, 2034, and then the difference between current condition and 2034. And what we're seeing with the improvements on Porter Road, the installation of the light at the Walmart intersection and then also on the south side of where this project would be, we're looking at in 10 years, it's 12 years now, 1.4 second reduction in time. And then at Porter Road and Wells driveway, reduction of 1.9 seconds, which doesn't really sound that big, oh, it's a second or it's two seconds. But if you multiply that times all of the trips, all of the cars and everything, that's, each one is moving one second, they're moving faster by 1.9 seconds, 1.4 seconds. So it's actually, the flow is going better in the future with the design of the road. And the design standards, a maximum of 55-second delay, it is allowed at any section. So with that, then it would be warranted and the city engineer and developers and public works would get together to do the improvements on the road to get that back down to a 55-second delay or less ideally. The development isn't going to generate traffic that's going to produce delays outside of the design standards for Porter Road. And the trip peak hours are, with traffic in the area, they're generated by the schools. Unfortunately, we don't have control over those. We direct control over them. We can just talk with them, help them better their pickup and drop-off, queuing and their traffic plan for it. They have to submit a traffic plan. We have traffic plans with them. Some of them are there, they're at capacity for their student body. So there really isn't going to be, we're almost in the worst situation right now because they're at that capacity, they can't have any more students. So what we're seeing, this is the worst and it can almost only get better by working with them. And there is significant issues with that. Years ago, everyone got bused to the schools or within proximity, you walked. Now it's parents driving and usually, you know, smart parents will try and carpool and one will do, you know, all the kids' friends and everything one day and then the next. But that's not often the case and it's usually just one or two kids in the car with the parent in a vehicle. And that's what's causing this. But the times for the schools, as we can see, the times on them are usually past the typical peak hours of travel where people are leaving their residences for work or coming home from work, the early morning or the late afternoon, the pickup and drop-off times for the schools or that's seven to eight or that two to three residential developments. They have it starting at 6:00 AM to the 8:00 AM or, you know, the 5:00 PM to the 7:00 PM later in the evening when they're coming home. So these won't be conflicting with each other. So the traffic situation caused by the schools in the area really won't conflict with any sort of increased traffic any sort of development would have here. And we have some commercial concepts from the applicant for that commercial portion. So we're not, the applicant isn't proposing just to take commercial or the Light Industry Warehouse and, you know, turn it into residential. There is a significant portion, this six and a half acres, that's still remaining in commerce for the city. So there's still availability for more commercial development that's going to be needed to serve all of the residents in the multifamilies and also all the single-family residences that are developing around the city. Here I have a slide showing the area compatibility. We have the residential site highlighted in that blue, and pardon me, I'm colorblind, so it's blue to me if it's something else, I'm sorry. The commercial site is in red and you can see the Revett Porter multifamily to the north and the Copa Flats to the south, across the street to the west, the Oasis at the Wells Development. But you have all the commercial development and the Walmart or the Wells Power Center where you see on the northeast of Shea Way, that's all going to be developed with commercial as well. So multifamily always, you know, is located surrounding commercial centers, work centers and other institutions as such. On the west, on the east side, we can see we have the college, but then we also have what's the ultimate development of the college. It hasn't reached its ultimate development yet. But the locating of the multifamily site and then the commercial site here surrounded by other multifamily, the residential that'll, sorry, the multifamily, then the commercial that would get fed off of it, it all works for zoning and for good city planning. So they buffer each other and it is, it's good development pattern. And it's a pattern that you'll see in many other cities around. The applicant followed the requirements of fourth in the city zoning code, section 18.140.060 for public comments. The site was posted. Notification letters went out to the property owners within 600 feet. They held a public meeting. No one attended the meeting. No one came to the, none of the public appeared at the April 25 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting when this GPA and P A D was presented. However, at the May 9 meeting, when the DRP for the residential portion, a good number of the public came out in opposition to it. And again, the complaints were mostly the locating of the multifamily and then the traffic conditions in the area. And so staff really looked at it and said, well, the traffic isn't, the traffic for this site isn't, how do I phrase it? The two don't butt heads together because they're the off-site times from each other. And compared to what this site could be by right under that CI-1 compared to what the P A D is with the downzoning of it to what's basically the mixed-use general, it, there will be traffic, of course, but it's not, it's not going to add to the headaches and the backups that we see on Porter Road right now from the other, from the schools, basically. And at the meeting, I don't remember who it was, but someone brought up that there were accidents in the area because of the traffic and then there were pedestrians involved crossing the street or it was something like that. So we looked into it. We had the police chief pull some data from the area and we have the police chief here who can speak to it if the council wishes. But in the, from the last year, there was 10 accidents with two pedestrians involved in this general vicinity, three accidents who had four injuries. And the times of the accidents, the common times were 5:00 to 6:00 PM, 8:00 to 9:00 AM. And the common day was on a Thursday or a Monday. So that's outside of the traffic times for the schools. So I can't say for certain if it was associated with that, but the traffic times associated with that, looking at the data, doesn't suggest that it was a school-related or the traffic. Maybe it was people late getting home or late getting to work and being, you know, not careful drivers. I don't know. Any accident, especially with any pedestrian, that's a horrible thing and we try as planners and the engineers with the city to limit those. We put all these design standards in place to try to make traffic flow smoothly and not have any sort of incidences. The Planning Commission at their April 25 P and Z meeting recommended approval of minor general plan amendment case GPA 2205, subject to the conditions in the staff report. They also recommended approval of Zone Map Amendment Case P A D 2205, subject to the conditions in the staff report. Each item requires a separate action by the council. If the council has any questions, happy to answer any. We also have the city engineer, we also have the police chief available. The applicant is available as well as his design team for any questions that the council may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation, I appreciate it. At this time, council, do you have questions or shall I move to the citizens' concerns at this time? And you would like to save your questions until after that? Okay. Okay, so let's do that. Thank you for the presentation. First off, let's, I just have these in any random order they were given to me. So let's start here and I'll give each person, I've got probably 10 or 15. So I want to make sure that each person has the same amount of time here. So I'll give you two to three minutes to complete your comments and make sure we get through everybody. First person is Sue Van Gosin, so please come forward.
I'm Sue Van Gosin. And this project, this area, was originally zoned or approved, even longer, okay, for one-level patio homes. And it eventually was approved last week at four and five-story highs. That doesn't fit with anything around there. The next apartments on either side of the street are just three stories. So there will be, it'll look out of place like a sore thumb. Also, if we approve this and we go ahead and build this site at four and five stories, any other development coming in will be able to use it as a precedent to also ask for four and five-story buildings, where right now they are asking for three. We don't want, we don't want downtown Tampa here. We don't want skyscrapers. We don't want seven stories. The traffic study is assuming that everyone in that apartment building is going to stay home because everyone in that apartment building is going to be working and everyone in that apartment building is going to be on the road. The road out of town is Porter Road. There is no other viable route out of town. Maricopa-Cassagrand Highway is not four-lane all the way and it goes over to Honeycutt, which has one lane that goes north out of town. They must go down Porter Road. They are going to be leaving at the same time everyone is dropping off their. at the same time everyone is dropping off their children. That's at least 2,000 cars that are not included in that. Also, the amenities that are presented at that meeting last week, they may not have designed it specifically for the Phoenix market, but that is the market that is watching for it. That is the market where people have been priced out of their apartments with amenities and they are waiting for this to come on. And everyone, or 90% of them, will be people from Phoenix that are coming into our city to rent here so that they can have a larger apartment with lots of amenities. And that's all traffic going north. Also, that commercial space that they have allotted there, we'd need a grocery store out here, one that keeps its shelves stocked. We're in desperate need of another grocery store out here. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next on the list, I have Jeannie Ellis. Please come forward.
Hi, I live in Glen Wild. And the traffic now is impossible. I live in between Leading Edge and what's the other school? The two schools on Adams Way. Yeah, Saddleback. And you cannot turn on Adams Way in the morning when the kids are being dropped off and in the afternoon when they're getting picked up. Plus, they have after-school care that goes over till 5 o'clock. So the parents are coming in and out of there all that time. The practical way for me to get home is Adams Way. I can't do it. So I go to Allen Stevens Parkway. Now, they have A-plus schools there that have buses that line up on Allen Stevens Parkway. So now I can't go Allen Stevens Parkway. So I go back to Honeycutt, go on our main entrance, but goes all the way around to South Gate, which is A-1 school. I have no way to get into my house. And you say that they studied and they planned and they did everything to build this apartment. Well, I did for my retirement home. I studied the zoning laws. I asked questions, what was going to be built there. You guys even had pictures out of the shopping center that was supposed to be there with tree-lined streets and sit-down restaurants and, and everything was walking distance to go there. Nothing said anything about all these apartments. You go to Walmart right now and you have to wait for a cart. They don't have enough carts for the people shopping there now. And he's talking about the schools are at capacity, so the traffic's not going to get anywhere. Aren't anybody in those apartments going to have children going to school? What schools are they going to go to if all the schools are at capacity now? I don't think it's fair that they can say, well, we're going to zone it to this now because we want to. But we bought our property and our retirement home based on what it was supposed to be. And this is not right. This is not right to us, the people that live there now.
Thank you for comments. Next up, I have Dustin Williams.
Thank you, council, mayor. I moved to Maricopa about two years ago after I lost my job in Salt Lake City, Utah. And I love this city. We moved here. We loved the small-town feel. Of course, it was a pandemic, so traffic was very low at the time. And as we've come out of that, traffic has grown. And it's become rather concerning, especially because of the high-density apartments that are being proposed for the city. I don't know who approved all the schools to be built on one street, but that got approved years ago and it is what it is. And so now we're looking at high-density apartments being built in the same area where we already have traffic congestion that is highly dangerous to our kids. Now, have we had the accidents? No. And I pray we never do. But as a, as a, as a parent who has a son that's going to be walking to A-plus every day, I'm concerned for him to walk across Allen Stevens Parkway. I don't see enough crosswalks. I don't see enough safety advisors on those crosswalks. And those are real concerns for all of us, whether we're parents, grandparents, or not. Nobody, nobody plans on getting in an accident when they leave their house in the morning. And we can talk about safety, and those are only dangerous drivers, distracted drivers. But the more people you have, the more risk is involved. And so I'd encourage you, council, to revisit this idea of housing that's, that's going to be adding hundreds upon hundreds of different family units. And I'd ask you to maybe take a look at adding more things that will support our youth in the city. Things on this side of, of the railway, things that we can actually build upon a community here instead of just jamming us packed full of like sardines in the city. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Next up, I have Brittany Posola.
Good evening. I've been in Maricopa eight years and I too love the small-town feel. There are seven multifamily developments between Honeycutt and the Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway that are being built or are proposed to be built, which means 2,000-plus units, which will add 3,000-plus cars to a already dangerous road. Porter is very dangerous. I walk that road every day to take my son to school. I walk it to go to Pecana Park. I've been hit, or I've almost been hit, sorry, I've almost been hit numerous times walking across that so-called crosswalk with the lights. Nobody pays attention to that. It's very dangerous. I am very worried about the students that are walking to and from school and riding their bikes. There's numerous kids that walk by themselves and the cars are not paying any attention. We have eight schools in the area, a preschool, a public school, five charter schools, and a college. Most of the kids, even the ones that have buses, are being driven to school. At pickup and drop-off time, Saddleback and Leading Edge backs up on the right-hand lane, making the right-hand side one lane. And Heritage and Pathway backs up on the left-hand side, making that a one lane. Plus, the middle lane gets backed up with people trying to turn the opposite direction, trying to cut in through those lanes to get to their kids. There's basically no place for an emergency vehicle to go down because there's people in the turn lane in the middle trying to turn. And it's, it's very dangerous. I can't make a left-hand turn out of my subdivision right next to Pathway anytime between 7:30 and 8:30 or between 2:00 and 4:00 to go anywhere. So if I want to come to the library during their programs, which are usually at 4 o'clock, I have to drive through my community to go through there. On top of the amount of people picking up, there are no school zone signs. Saddleback is a public school. There should be signs that say "school zone." We should have a flashing light that says 25 miles an hour like they do by the school up here on Honeycutt. There is nothing that says it's a school zone. Somebody told me that they tried to get school zone signs and charter schools don't get the same designation as a public school. Do we not care about our students going to charter schools as well as our public schools? It should be a school zone. It should be 35 during the day and 25 during school times. And there's no school zone designation. It's very dangerous for our students. One of the pedestrian accidents was a student accident at the Porter Light by the Circle K that was hit on a bicycle. And it was during school time. It just happened this school year. I remember it. Like I said, it's very dangerous. I do, after hearing his comments, I do prefer having residential to the amount of commercial, but I do not agree with a five-story building. It's going to be ugly. Nobody wants to look at that. We're not Phoenix. We're small-town Maricopa. Three-story and below would be amazing. And to address the fact that he sent out letters, it's only for 600 feet. The only people that live with 600 feet of those apartments are the apartments that are there now. So nobody else got a letter about that. The little sign, the orange sign, it can't be seen from the road. That said that there was a public hearing. It can't be read from the road and there's no place to pull over to park to read that sign. I tried to go online and find the hearing, public hearing, and the website is so disorganized, I couldn't figure out where that public hearing was at. I was trying to look for another one that's over here across from the library and could not find it. I would hope that you can take and look at the safety measures for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany.
Mayor, may I ask Ricky a question?
Sure, by all means.
Ricky, just a question for clarification, if you don't mind coming back. I've been listening to the differences in comments and you're the first person who has actually said, I don't mind it being residential as opposed to all the commercial that was planned there. It's just that you don't like the five-story buildings. You prefer to have three-story buildings. And when I listened to the presentation, I have a concern related to the same thing that you do, in that the presentation indicated with the way it's currently zoned and commercial traffic, the trips are estimated at 1,800 trips, which is hugely more significant than the estimated 5,700 trips out of what they're proposing. So does that have any impact on your comment that you made in regards to residential versus commercial?
Yes. Before I came here, I was not liking that it was residential. But when he explained, he took the time to explain that to us from hearing our, our comments, because I didn't come to the initial meeting because I didn't know what was happening. So we came to that meeting. I prefer the 5,000 that he estimates compared to the 18,000, but I still don't like the five-story. Five-story is not...
I think that's perfect. And I think you came very well informed in terms of the difference. And I think it's an important point. So thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the list, and I apologize, I'm trying to read this, I'm sorry, I can't read the first name. Barn, Barnan? What was your first name?
Sadie Barnum.
Sorry, I couldn't read it.
She can't read my handwriting? Well, guess I'll practice at preschool tomorrow.
Sorry, Sadie.
Okay, so I came to the meeting last week and I've heard everyone is super excited about the same thing. But my question, and I guess we can't ask a question. So my concern...
You can ask a question.
The public hearing, so you can go ahead.
It, I'm glad that Global Water was here. I do have to say that because water, in my opinion, and the livelihood that I had growing up is a huge concern. So you saying that farmers are going to have to reduce their water use, that's who's being punished. But I'm going to tell you that if farmers stop raising animals and food to eat, then at least we'll still be able to flush the toilet and brush our teeth. Electrical company charges us almost every month extra to borrow power. Like, he has a great 20-year plan for water, which, exciting that he explained so much and I was here. But what are we doing about the electrical? Because we're already super high, in my opinion, compared to other places. And they charge us extra every month to borrow power just to sustain what we have now. Which, I'm like, how is that going to get resolved? Or else, I just don't understand it, which could be true.
Mr. Mayor...
Go ahead.
This is a public hearing on item 8.3, so we need to continue to focus on 8.3. We can't go back to an item, Global Water, that was on the agenda earlier. That wasn't set for a public hearing.
Sadie, I will get together with you after this meeting.
Okay.
And speak to you about it.
Because like, the apartment complex is going to use more electricity, is what I'm seeing. So...
You can state that.
You know what I mean? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Sadie. Appreciate it. All right. Next up is Michelle Shirley, Michelle Shirley. Charlie, sorry. Apologies. Ah, it's not working. I can help.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Michelle Shiley. We all have valid concerns here, right? I just wanted to second the height, the height of the building. That's an issue. I don't have a problem with residential. We all moved here at some point, right? The height of the building, it's going to be out of place. Something like that, if it gets moved over by the casino, you know, there's something already of that elevation in the area. So I would just request that the height of the building be revisited, for sure, if possible. The other thing is, I know business has not come here as quickly as anticipated or hoped for. I'm worried that we're kind of getting sold out in our little area of the community. Because if this continues as a trend, what's to stop the entire area on the east side and the west side of Walmart becoming residential? We will not have any of our own restaurants or additional shopping, you know, markets in this area. Everyone from Tortosa and Sorrento is going to be forced to drive all the way to the Parkway, you know, continually on a daily basis. I feel that it's unfair to us to allow this zoning change. I don't know if you can give us any promises that that land's going to be continued to be set aside, you know, for commercial and retail use. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Next up, I have Heather Williams.
Good evening. I wanted to talk about four things really quick. First of all, the zoning, as my husband mentioned earlier, we moved here from Utah. I made all the questions, I asked all the questions. I was a Realtor in Utah. So moving here, I knew the questions to ask. I know many of you know the name Pat Larson. She was a good friend of ours. She was our Realtor. She knew all the stuff. And so when we moved here, she told me everything that was coming into this area. Long story short, had I have known what is being presented now, I would not have moved into Glen Wild. The other thing I want to speak of is I know you have a standard protocol of notifying people within 600 feet. I actually am not in that 600 feet, but I do feel like we could probably do better with that. Because had I have not been on our Glen Wild page, I would have not known what a major issue this is. Because again, you could not see the signs. And I know you guys all have your standards and I know you're trying to do your best. But I can say the majority of us had no idea because the sign was put up. And also, the majority of us had no idea because we weren't in the 600-feet current standard that you guys have. So I just feel like that could be better, better done next time. Number two, I would like to ask a question that I've been presented. I've heard that a budget is being approved, and I know we're not currently on that topic, but I have been told that only a few police officers and no firefighters are being accounted for in that new budget. So my question is, if we're bringing in all this multiple housing, who's going to be protecting the residential areas that's, if we're bringing in all these new people? And I don't know if you can answer that, but it is a concern.
That could be answered during the budgetary item itself.
Okay, thanks.
So make note of that, our chief of police and fire, and bring that back.
Okay. It was just a concern I had with if we're going to be adding all these multiple people to this new area. Number three, as the traffic has been brought up a million times, I just want to reiterate that as a citizen here. I have three kids and they beg me to drive their, to ride their bikes to school. I won't allow it. Because crossing Porter, I don't even like going on Porter to take them. So that's just a very dangerous thing. And adding residential, adding all these apartments, kids are going to be coming, it's just going to add to the influx of it. I know the report said there were 10 accidents, two pedestrians. In my opinion, that's 10 too many. And it's just going to be increased with that. One more thing is, I am concerned that Allen Stevens will be used as a scapegoat when Porter becomes ridiculous, that people will use Allen Stevens to get to where they need to go. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. The other two I have are for the individuals that spoke at the call to the public, Ron and Susan. Do you wish to speak now on anything different than you talked to us earlier about? Okay. Just wanted to make sure you had an opportunity. Thank you very much. That concludes all the speaker cards I have at this time. Does anyone else wish to speak to this topic and this topic only? You may do so. Please come forward. Please come forward.
I was here last week and they were talking about having the lights on in the parking garage all night long and on their walkways for safety and for handicapped people that needed to get through the pathways and stuff. Well, in Glen Wild, we can't have outside lighting because of the Twilight community. Now, are we going to see the lights from that? Now, are we going to see the lights from that apartment that are on all night long? Are we going to see that from our homes?
Well, again, this, so, great question, but unfortunately, that doesn't pertain specifically to this item. And so, this item is about the rezoning of this particular area.
Well, if they get to...
I understand that you've asked about the lighting, but I would suggest speaking to somebody offline here, because unfortunately, we have to comply with the legality of things.
Okay.
But, thank you very much for the question. Let's make sure we get you an answer. Okay? Anyone else on this item, please? Okay, seeing no one on this item, that'll take us back to council for questions, discussion, other issues, as well as there are other times for things as well. But, let's go to council. At this time, I see Councilmember Smith with some questions, and so, let's move to her.
So, I'd first like to start with some, I think, bigger picture information to share that I find very, very important. Many of you may or may not know about the state bills that went through in legislation this year, that thankfully were avoided, but they're likely to come back in terms of the state wanting to override all zoning requirements from a city, because they want any and all apartment complexes to come in anywhere with any standards and look like whatever the builder wants to build. That's what the state legislators are pushing. Thankfully, it was done away with this year, but there's no guarantee that it will come back next year. So, I want to make you understand that the city has to be very careful in terms of saying no growth, no apartments, because the state takes very seriously the need for affordable homes. And they take it so seriously, they're willing to consider putting bills into place that require cities to obey their rules instead of the zoning rules that we have in our cities. So, one thing for you just to be concerned about or take into consideration, it's a risk in terms of what cities do with that information. Second of all, there was discussion on 347. I loved your questions, Ron, I believe it is. There are, if you look at any of the media outlets, if you look at any of the State of the Cities that the mayor has provided, if you look for meetings that were held just recently, what, three months ago, you guys held a town hall on State Route 347? It's discussed all of the time in terms of 347 and what a problem it is. There are many phases to that problem, and so, any of us would love to get with you and go over those phases. It's been heavily worked. But, the one big picture that I want to share with you is that hopefully in the next couple weeks, Pinell County supervisors are going to hopefully approve to put the new bill, excuse me, the new proposition on the ballot to re-engage the half-cent tax for the PRTA, which gives money to the State Route 347 project. Hugely important for us all to take seriously. If we want State Route 347 to be improved, that proposition is going to be very important for you to vote in favor of. It's a, really, a continuation of the half-cent that stopped in April, and it would continue again if approved after the election. So, two very important pieces of information, but I'd be happy to talk with you about 347 and the phases that we see ahead of us, the parties that are involved, the agreements that we have with Gila River, all kinds of communication. We talk about it all the time. The mayor and vice mayor go to transportation meetings at the state level, asking for money and funds and revenues, and then, as the mayor indicated, goes to the federal level, asking for money as well. So, it's very important. In fact, I think most all of us would probably say State Route 347 is our most important topic. But, I don't want you to leave here thinking that it's not important to us. It's very, very, very important to us. So, those two big things, overriding all of this, I think. One thing in regards to the height of the buildings that I'd like to talk a little bit about. When I looked at the project, and I know that the project itself is not being voted on tonight, it really is about the general plan and zoning, but because most of you have concerns in terms of the height, when I looked at it, and I think about the amenities that are going in, and many of you were at the meeting, you know about the amenities, but we're talking about pickleball courts, two pools, a lap pool, a waiting pool, three parks, Ramada, a dog park, a clubhouse, a tot lot. So, if you think about the fact that all, a lot of their area is going to be consumed by all these amenities, my question to the developer is, if you didn't have all those amenities, you took those away and you just built a plethora of three-story buildings, you're probably going to get around the 500 apartment mark again with no amenities and all of that value taken out of it. Would that be a fair statement? Anyone can address that?
Evening, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. My name, for the record, is Greg Davis with I Plan Consulting, and that's a very accurate statement. One of the benefits of going up is that you preserve room for open space, and that's why this project has more open space than required. That's why we're able to provide the more buffering around the edges. So, it's a very vital component to our project.
And to me, that was really intriguing, because if you think about what's to come in terms of, because we are fighting very hard for high-paying jobs, industry to come to the city of Maricopa. We fight very, very hard for that to happen. If we're successful in getting those types of companies to come to the city of Maricopa, we probably are talking 70 feet. And you might say, well, it depends on what location it's in. But, we are going to have buildings in the city of Maricopa that are 54 feet, 70 feet. So, the height didn't scare me because of the quality of the product and the fact that if they go with just straight three-level apartments in order to get the value out of their property, you're going to end up with the same amount of houses and no amenities. And that doesn't interest me at all. The other thing that was interesting, if I'm correct on the project, and if I go out of line here, Dennis, let me know, but just talking about the public hearing and the concerns, the residents that would live here, the developer, the owners of the development, they have a project where you rent for five years, and then, you provide a down payment for a house after five years. And so, my understanding is your vacancy rate is typically lower than the national average. Can you address that and make sure that I have that correct?
Sure, Mayor, Councilmember. That is correct. The parent company has installed a program in their various projects, because they're also a single-family home builder. And so, their renters, after they stay a certain time, would develop equity in and a house that they would build. So, they're a long-term builder, they own all their properties, they've been developing urban rental multifamily for over 60 years. That's why Eldorado has partnered with them, because they bring a lot of value in long-term sustainability. And when you're talking about a project that's complex like this, that's vital to that relationship. So, programs like you talk about, yes, absolutely, that's what they've done, and they'll continue to evolve that as they develop in Maricopa.
All right. Thank you for that information. We also talk about the concentration of apartments in that area, and what you're going to see, you all have probably heard about the great development that's going to happen on the south side of our overpass, and all of the wonderful businesses, restaurants, et cetera, that's going to go into that area. You will probably see, based on standards and comparisons to other communities across the state, across the country, that apartment complexes will pop up around there, too. It's part of a concentration of services that those who live in apartment complexes typically want to be near, and it's kind of a natural evolution. I just wanted to bring that up, because it is a fact to consider. I just have so many thoughts on this. So, the traffic's problem, to me, from based on what I hear, is the most significant problem. And I have to take in consideration the fact that as it's currently zoned, they're talking 1,800 trips a day. So, pardon me?
1,000.
1,000. What did I say?
1,800.
Oh, 1,800, sorry. 1,800, 1,800 wouldn't be bad. 1,800 trips a day, based on the use of all of those different entities that might be there, restaurants, commercial, businesses for job employment, whatever might end up in that. It's currently estimated 1,800 trips a day, whereas if it's converted into the residential, we're talking 5,700 trips a day. To me, that speaks volumes as well. But, my point being, what I keep hearing is the traffic. Now, I live just down the street at Homestead, so you've probably read in the blogs, if you're on the blogs, well, Councilmember Smith said, "I avoid that area during the go-to-school time and the go-away-from-school time." And I avoid that area, because you're exactly right, I've seen videos. So, to me, that is the problem that we as a city have to solve in regards to, if you go to Chandler, you go to Gilbert, you go to Mesa, you look at their major roads, Chandler Boulevard, Ray Road, Warner Road, if there are schools on those streets, they don't have backups of cars. So, how do we get rid of the backup of cars off of the public streets and utilizing their own property in order to adjust for the pickup of students? I think that's the problem that needs to be solved, because in regards to the traffic study, which takes all of this into consideration, it doesn't look to me that adding the residential's going to create the problem. Leaving it as commercial creates three times the problem, if you understand all the facts from the Traffic Impact Study. So, to me, City Manager, yeah, I'll turn it over to you. The school traffic is the problem, and I, that's the only way I can see it at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. The city staff, including our planners, our police department, and other personnel, our risk personnel, have been meeting with the schools over the last multiple months, the school districts, the private schools, the charter schools. We have spoken with them about their failure to comply with their original traffic plans, because when they approve them, they have traffic plans, and then, people kind of forget about them. And we have done drone footage of every single school. We have provided that to every single school and the committee that meets. We have a regular committee that meets, and they have the summer to revise their traffic plans. They, if the parents do not have a right to park in lanes, impede traffic, hold up traffic lights, park in turning lanes, waiting for their kids to pick up. So, we will be, based on the new traffic plans that the schools will put out to the parents, and then, we will focus on that with what I would call courtesy citations at the beginning of the new school year, not to hit their pocketbook, but to get their attention, and for them to solve the problem, which the parents are helping to create, to be quite honest. When you look at the drone videos, you'll see that the circular pass around the schools, there are sometimes gaps that a car and a half can fit in between, and it's because parents are texting, or reading their novel, or whatever it is, waiting for, you know, their time for the child to come out. So, yes, there has to be volunteers saying, "Move up, close up the gaps." There has to be people, maybe we have to look at staggered pickup and drop-off times. I know people say, "Well, I got a kindergarten and a fifth grader." Well, they can be picked up at the same time. So, there are solutions available, but the solution is not to use a public transportation corridor for those purposes. So, in the past, we've been asking them, we've been working with them, some do better than others. Some, I can tell you now that they're all working diligently and will have their plans put together. And Rudy, when are their plans due to us?
For the project itself?
Yeah. When do the schools have to resubmit their traffic plans?
We're working on that during this summer, so before the school starts again.
So, they have to, we don't have a particular date yet?
Right, no.
Okay. So, they have to submit the plans in advance of this new school year, and then, we will monitor those, and like I said, we will have more people out there, which, sorry, you got to move around, and some parents won't like it. They're going to say, "Well, I have 20 minutes, I don't want to go home and wait to pick up my kid, I just want to sit here." We all have to do our part. It's called, you know, we all have part of causing the problem, and we have part in solving the problem. And so, that's what a community does, is we work together to, you know, with the good and the bad to help solve those. So, the parents and the schools and the administrations have to work with that. Our staff has spent a lot of time, the drone video footage is, I think, very revealing. You know, we can see where they're parking, where they're turning, they're blocking people's driveways. It's true what they say about not being able to turn, but all those, like I said, we've tried to be nice, so we will start issuing courtesy citations at the beginning of the school year, and if they can persist, then we'll have to write traffic violations.
City Manager, that sounds great. What's the chance of it really working?
I think there's a good chance if everyone will participate. The problem is, some people feel like everyone else should participate, but not them.
And will we have the ability to rectify that as well?
And those are like the ones who will get the citation.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Those who feel like everyone else should comply except for them, they're probably the ones who'll end up getting the citations.
Councilmember Smith, there are others that would like to ask some questions.
I'm finished.
Can I ask them and then come back to you?
No, I'm finished.
We have Councilwoman Lierman and Councilwoman Wade. So, Councilwoman Lierman, please proceed. Councilwoman Lierman, would you put the microphone on? Okay.
I think they're going to turn it up.
Turn it up a little bit in the back. Talk loud.
Have we talked at all to the schools about providing new housing cards? It sounds like maybe one school does, but there's five schools. Has that been part of the conversation at all?
We've mentioned all those as options. Different schools have different philosophies about what they want to do and how much they want to invest, and how much they want to contribute. You know, we hear about the, a couple of things we heard about is the crossing lights. Those crossing lights can only be put in at where there are appropriate crosswalks. And we realize in some cases, such as A-plus school, that a safe crosswalk is you have to go about a block down, cross at the signal, and come a block back. And we realize people like the path of least resistance would rather just run across the road, just like we see our youth running across the railroad tracks, getting to the high school, and, you know, and there is a safe path, but people don't always choose to do that. So, there are safe paths for all of them. You know, we, at the end of the day, it's going to take, again, all of us, it's going to take the parents, it's going to take the school board administration, and all of us to solve the problem. But, one of the issues is that we have been a small town, but we are growing up. And like it or not, we're not going to stay a small town forever. We know as a fact, based on our planning area, that most of us in this room probably won't be here to see it, but we'll be a million people one day. That's just the way it is. But, we do have growing pains and things that have to change, and everyone's got to do their part, and that's what we're working towards.
Thank you. I did have one question for the developer, and I know this, we're talking about zoning, but it was brought up numerous times about the five-story building, and my understanding is that there was a design so that the five-story buildings were set back at a certain point so that they weren't as noticeable. Thank you. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Mayor Price, Councilwoman, or Councilwoman, we do have a slide available if you want to see it, but basically, part of the design philosophy is that we're trying to push the buildings together, cluster them in the middle of the project, so you don't have a situation where you have a four- or five-story building right next to a sidewalk, or a right-of-way, or an adjacent property. And so, that design element helps keep the buildings that are four and five stories, you know, 100-plus feet away from the adjacent property lines. We're actually even further from the north property line because of the REV product, which is a single-story multifamily, is one level, so it's a little less intense than a typical, so we have even more space on that side. And if you look at the building design themselves, specifically the larger buildings, we actually tier them down at the end, so they're one-story less, and there's quite a bit of articulation and undulation in the roofline as well as the massing, so they really don't feel that way. We felt that this was an excellent location for a building of the size, because we are so far away from existing single-family homes, and because there's so much intensity already happening here. So, but we did design those elements... So, we, but we did design those elements in to help kind of soften, uh, the look of that and make it less noticeable.
Thank you. I just had one other comment. I, I concur with, um, Councilmember Smith about the, one of our goals as a city is diversified housing. And there isn't any, um, apartment complex currently that offers the amenities that this would. And I, I believe that there are people that are interested in that type of lifestyle. And so, for me, that was a plus because we want to continue to achieve that goal of offering diversified housing.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Wade?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we, we pride ourselves in, in making sure that we understand the subject before we come to you, to talk to you about approval, because you are, in fact, the approval authority. We are not. We approve what staff brings before us, but it's based on what you have asked us to do or asked us not to do. Uh, this is one of those cases, uh, unfortunately, probably for me, where I have to deviate away from my council members. I live in Glenwell. I walk there every day, in Pocana Park, by Pocana Park, every day. I see the danger in the, in the traffic. I see the kids coming through, kids that I speak to every day, and concerned about their well-being when they make the, make it across the street. I used to take my grandson to Saddleback. So, I've seen parents misuse the parking area, misuse, misuse the front area, turn left on a do-not-turn-left sign. I've seen all this through, over the last twelve years that I've lived here in Maricopa. I think what the problem is, it's not just getting people to conform, it's getting people to be informed. From what I've understood, from what I'm hearing you say, is you don't like what's being done because you weren't asked about it. You weren't given the opportunity to speak on it. And when we first were did, when we first did the his home, or, um, the assessment study, uh, six years ago, five years ago? You know, okay, uh, I held a, a event, a council member on the corner event, and it was packed with people who were concerned about the housing assessment at that time. And we moved, we continued to move down the road, which we have done. And we've gotten to the point where you're frustrated and disappointed in that your approval wasn't granted, or wasn't even expected to have. So, I have a problem with a five-story building in, in my community. I have a problem with not having enough traffic safety for my kids, to my grandson, to go across the street so he can get to school. I also have a problem with not being able to speak out if I have an opportunity to say, "Councilmember, you have, you can speak out all you want." However, I'm representing you, and if I'm not getting the points, getting it across, then it's not getting out there. And if you don't let me know, or let other, or other council members know, then the information is not going to get out. So, you did that tonight. And I appreciate the fact that you did that tonight. As I said, this may be detrimental to me, because it might be one of those times where I deviate from the, the group, if you will, or from our, from my fellow council members, and maybe even staff. But I would have to say, if I was standing on, at that li- at that podium, I don't want a five-story building in my community. I'm even... And, and I think it's only fair, and I appreciate the fact that you've come here tonight and spoken. I'm, I'm sorry I wasn't here, that the other night I was actually in, out of town during that, uh, planning and zoning meeting. But if this is, this is where we need to have some con- some conversation, perhaps we do need to have some conversation, perhaps we do need to establish maybe another committee or something to take a look at that, because we're far down the road when we had the assessment, the housing assessment done. We know we need it. We know we need the multifamily units, because there's a need for, for the community. There are nurses, and our teachers, and police officers, and other folks that aren't here, are able to buy a home, that these properties work for them. But how we put them together is probably more important than the fact that we're trying to put them together. So, when we start to talk about this, uh, in another way, at another time, know where I am. And while, as taken the bunt of traffic, people, things that have been harmful to the community, to things that have been harmful to the kids, and I think Glenwell has just about had enough.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wade. Uh, other, uh, questions at this time, and, and clearly, um, Council, I, I certainly want to move off of this public hearing. I do, would like to close it and, and continue on with the, with the statements and questions. And we have that o- opportunity as we move to the next item. But, uh, Councilwoman Marsh, you have your hand up currently, so we'll move to you.
Since I've moved here over ten years ago, I've been in favor of intelligent growth here in Maricopa. I participated in the rewrite of the general plan update, where we proposed multiple core villages instead of a big X-Y grid, like you see in Chandler, Gilbert, Mesa, Tempe, and Phoenix. Uh, our village concept, uh, includes a, a primary village around fries and bashes as a core. It includes a village with Walmart as a core. And you surround the core with apartments with high-rise and mid-rise buildings. We did a housing study five years ago, which netted out that we need twenty-four percent of our housing to be apartments, to be high-density, and, and, and lower occupancy rates, lower, um, rent, uh, or purchase. And we need over six thousand apartments right now in Maricopa to support the teachers and firemen, and, uh, shop workers and restaurant workers who want to live here and not have to commute down 347. And we need to build twenty-four percent of our future homes as apartments going forward. We need modern development, and this project is a strikingly modern development. It, it answers all the zoning requirements, and it, it answers the, uh, energy efficiency requirements we need, the water use requirements, and the transportation requirements. Um, so, I'm, I'm definitely voting yes on this, uh, general plan revision and zoning update. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor. Okay, so, uh, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, uh, and move on to the item. Um, excuse me, sorry. That's just so we can have, again, further discussion. Uh, this is the Resolution, Mayor, City Council, City of Maricopa, Arizona, approving and adopting a minor general plan land use amendment to change the land from public institutional and mixed-use to mixed-use for approximately twenty-five point three acres. I won't read the rest, uh, it's for discussion and action at this time. So, again, councilmembers, uh, you, you've already given some statements, but we'll move to the Vice Mayor at this time, and make sure that those, uh, that the public hearing is officially closed, and we're moving on to the item, so we can discuss it further.
I want to thank everybody for showing up today. I've been begging people to show up all week, asking you to show up, asking you to get out here and talk, letting the council know exactly how you feel. It's important. Um, I've been engaging on social media and talking to everyone that asks me a question. Um, I have Facebook lives once a month. This month, there's two of them, one on transportation, one a general one, where you can ask these questions. Um, Christian, um, sorry, Mayor Price and I have run two public meetings, um, that were open to the public in regard to transportation in the 347, but not only the 347, but transportation inside the community also. I currently serve on four different transportation committees throughout the state. I work my tail off for transportation, and I believe that we need to fix our transportation issues in the city of Maricopa. You know, this, um, some of the questions that were asked had me thinking, and, you know, I was writing them down, and I got pages full of notes, and somebody, some people have covered some of it, some of not others. One of the biggest things I heard was, not biggest, but one of the most important things was public safety. And public safety is really important. So, we speak to our, our chief, we speak to both of our chiefs, and we talk to them and ask them what they need before we write a budget. And somebody mentioned that we'll talk about a budget later, and we will. And everybody will have an opportunity to talk about that, um, if you submitted your card for that. But just to clarify, within our operating budget by department, over forty-three percent of our operating budget for the city of Maricopa goes to police, fire, um, dispatch, and so on. So, public safety gets forty-three percent of every penny that we spend in the city of Maricopa on our operating budget. So, I want people to understand that. It's, we don't skimp on public safety. It's very important to us. Um, could we use more? I don't know. Um, but the chief does, and he comes to us and tells us what he needs before the budget is put together. So, just to follow up on that. And then back on transportation, you know, transportation is important. Um, I, I drove Porter Road again today just to look at it. Um, I've looked at the drone videos that not only the city has done, but my, my, um, my, oh, my own company has done. And we've looked at drone video and, and looked at the transportation issues that they're facing. I spoke to people at MUSD, and how important it is that we come to a better resolution on transportation, and how people are getting in and out of schools. But it's not just MUSD. MUSD has one of those schools on Porter Road. We have a lot of schools that are not MUSD, and they, they fall under different rules in what they do. Um, and MUSD pays people to get out there in direct traffic and have kids cross the street, where charter schools don't do that very much. They, um, rely more on volunteers. So, I would suggest that if you want to volunteer, every one of those schools is looking for volunteers to help in the morning and the afternoons with transportation issues. So, you can stand out there, you know, with the vest, and, if you want to. It's up to you, um, if you have time to do that. I know I don't, but some people might. Um, some of the other things is, um, with, when you talk about apartments, and I'm sorry, I've been holding a lot in, right? When you talk about apartments, MUSD this year, um, just four years ago, they had, I think it was four foreign, uh, teachers. And those are teachers from foreign countries that come to the United States to teach within our school system. And that's just Maricopa Unified School District. That's not the charters. This year, coming up, this next school year, there'll be over eighty-five foreign teachers that come from other countries to the city of Maricopa to teach because of the teacher shortage in the city of, and not, I'm sorry, in the state of Arizona, including the city of Maricopa. Those teachers need places to live. Currently, a lot of them, there's, I think there's forty-five this past year, I'm, don't quote that number. But a lot of them, they'll rent a house together. And I think they would like a one, a one-bedroom apartment or a two-bedroom apartment for them and their family, more than renting four or five people in a four-bedroom or three-bedroom house. Um, so, we need the housing for our teachers. And that's just the foreign teachers. That doesn't include all the kids graduating from college in their second, third year of teaching, who come to Maricopa and want to teach. So, unless you're going to have, um, paid teachers, a hundred, two-hundred thousand dollars a year, they're not buying a five-hundred thousand dollar house. It's not going to happen. They need other places to live. Our police department, they, we don't pay them a hundred or two-hundred thousand dollars a year to qualify for a half a million dollar house, which is, I think it's four-fifty, or four-twenty-four was the median house, uh, price in the city of Maricopa this past, this past month, right? So, it's police, it's fire, it's teachers, it's the folks that, in the hospitals. And everybody, I hear people all the time saying they went to Banner, and they have this great doctor, but then the doctor goes away, or the nurse practitioner goes away. And why do they go away? Because they can't find places to live in the city of Maricopa, so they take a job up in the valley, and they live in different places. So, there's, there is a shortage of homes, as we know. Because if you put a house on the market in the city of Maricopa, it sells in a couple days sometimes, maybe a week or two. And there's a real shortage of affordable housing in the city of Maricopa. So, I don't, I don't see us ever doing where we have project style and federal housing. And I've seen some people on those complaints online, nobody mentioned them today, but they're worried about Section 8 apartments. These are not that. These are market-rate apartments. These are apartments that allow for people to, to live, work, and play in the same area. People are not going to move to Maricopa to do a job in Phoenix. They can get a cheaper house, a cheaper apartment in Phoenix, right? They're going to move to Maricopa and live in these apartments to do the jobs we want. Just over the overpass, right, we will have forty, fifty stores that are going in. So, when you go over the overpass, look to the left, all that dirt, you'll have a ton of stores in there. You'll have a ton of opportunity in there. A ton of commercial is going in there. And the people that work in those stores are not buying a half a million dollar house in the city of Maricopa, but they want to live here, where they work, and where they can take that five-minute commute back and forth. Um, I personally stopped working in the valley, so I can work in the city of Maricopa, because I hated the commute. Um, I can move on, and if I can, I'll come back if I think of something else, but if somebody else has something else to say.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, by all means. Councilwoman Wade?
Yeah, I just want to address the, the 347 conversation, actually. Um, my office is on Buckeye and Central. And I do that drive, I just, at, just during the pandemic, I didn't do that every day. But I do that drive mostly every day, three times a week, backwards and forward. So, I understand the dilemma of the traffic on the 347. And if we can get that fixed, I would really be very happy about that, because then I wouldn't have to do that drive. And then I wouldn't have to worry about people passing me in the emergency lane on the right, because they're crazy drivers. And I wouldn't have to worry about that. So, I, I think the com- one comment was made that the people in Glenwell maybe need to learn how to drive a little better. Well, as long as they're not driving like the people on the 347, I'm okay with that. So, we, we do, the 347 is important. It's certainly important to me personally. I have seen my, my colleagues, it's important to them as well. And as soon as we can get that resolved, and I, we've come a long way. And, and we've come a long way in a very short period of time, because there was a point in time where we were stagnant, we weren't moving at all, when it came time to develop those relationships to help us to get that resolved. So, believe us, we, we've come a long way, and we have a long way to go, because we don't... When, when people ask me about the 347, the first question that I ask them, "Who owns the land?" He who owns the land owns the process. And so, the, the, uh, the, the fact that it is something that is important, and it becomes even more important when you add more people to the mix by having high density, then it, you, you need to know that we are concerned about that. You need to know that it is important to us, and it's important, it's important enough for you to come here. We need to make sure that we, uh, place a priority on it. And I assure you, we do put a priority on it, because having additional folks coming into the community is just, it just makes it, it's a mandatory requirement, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Smith?
All right, so, I would like to have Derek, I believe you're the right person, come up and talk about the Traffic Impact Study. Um, what all goes into it? Why are the numbers believable? Why, um, do you feel that it's eighteen thousand trips versus six thousand trips? Um, tell us about the Traffic Impact Study and all the work that goes into it. And do you take into consideration only what's existing today? Or what's anticipated and approved in the future? Tell us about that.
Um, if I could, I'd like to defer that to the city engineer, uh, civil engineer trained on that.
Sure, perfect.
Reads them every single day.
See, I thought you were the right person, Derek, but that's great.
Member of the council. Um, the traffic impact analysis is based on real numbers. It's not based on how we feel. Say, for example, um... One of the things that we take into account is growth. And, uh, we have been using three to four percent growth. And the terrific, traffic impact analysis that we did for this one showed that between this year and the last year, uh, the growth was just one percent of traffic through the intersection of Porter Road, which means that we're still taking into account more traffic than it is, uh, in reality. The traffic impact analysis also uses, uh, not only a traffic generated by this development, but also all the developments around the area. Sorry. And it was the same traffic, uh, engineer who did the traffic impact analysis for Revival Porter, uh, and for, also for this development. So, if you see the report at the end, he attaches also the report from all the developments around the area. Because when we worked with him, I provided him all the traffic impact analysis from all the developments that are coming out of the area, so he could include everything into it. So, it is not just the traffic generated by this development, but it's also the traffic generated by all the developments around, plus all the traffic generated by, uh, all the developments that are coming to the city of Maricopa, which is not just these apartments, but it's also other, um, single-family residents that are coming mostly at the east of the, of the city.
And outside of the staging problem that we obviously have at the schools, it takes into consideration, I'm assuming as well, the school traffic that would be considered normal, not the staging, but the normal traffic? Or does it eliminate the schools out of it? Is it just residential and commercial?
No, it, it's, it takes, it takes into account also the traffic generated by the schools, not only generated by the ref- residents. So, uh, the traffic engineer does counts of how many cars pass through an intersection, and goes from one point to the, to the other point, mostly for this one on Porter Road, plus also... plus also our guidelines require them to analyze a mile away from their development. And for bigger ones, even two miles, and larger ones into faces and all the way out of the city.
Okay, so it uses, it uses current traffic, and then it uses that to basically calculate based on the additional entitlements, the apartment complexes that have already been approved around there, plus this one that's being proposed. It uses that real data.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Let me add too, that in addition to all of that, they do a traffic analysis based on the land use, existing land use of any land not developed.
Perfect. That's not even entitled.
For instance, when the REB report was done, it included eighteen thousand trips coming out of this facility. So it's based on, that's why this is considered a down zone, so it's important to note that as well.
Perfect. And given that traffic study, or the traffic impact study that we currently have, the current use is at twenty-one percent. I want to just bring that back up. It was in the presentation earlier.
Right. So there are two things that we need to consider when calculating the capacity. Twenty-one percent is to get from one intersection to the other, but once you, you get to the intersection, then that's when we count how many seconds of delay you're gonna get at every intersection for, and Porter Road is designed to have a fifty-five second, which is pretty standard for all streets. And, and we have shown that it's been under fifty, fifty seconds still with this development coming in.
Okay, thank you very much.
And if I may add to that.
Yes.
When you do the traffic analysis, you then determine traffic mitigations, such as adding another signal, or re-changing the timing, or adding turn lanes, or all those mitigations that then the developer has to do on his dime, not the taxpayer's dime.
Right.
That helps adjust, and if you remember the report, two of those intersections actually lost time.
Right.
Less time than what it is currently, once those mitigations would occur.
Right, yeah, I gathered the information in terms of what improvements would have to be done with this new project. Shea Way, there would have to be a light added. We're talking about right-hand, right-hand out-only exits that help improve the traffic situation, a stacking lane, and a de-acceleration lane for entry into the complex. So there's some effort and money that has to be spent in order to make sure the traffic ends up in the situation that the traffic impact analysis is indicating it will. So if you don't mind, Mayor, if you give me just a second, I'm trying to segue into another thought, but if I could talk to, and, and this may or may not be a fair question, if I can talk to the developer. So you're hearing that people don't like the five-story buildings. And you have all these amenities that are being proposed with the five-story building and the four-story building. If you had to go down to the three-story buildings, what does that do to your project in regards to the amenities? Is it the same quality, or how does it balance out so that it's a viable solution for you?
Sure. Mayor Price, Vice Mayor, and Councilwoman Smith. Basically, if we go to a more traditional type of development, we, you know, just lose those space efficiencies. So we're, we just don't have the room to fit all the amenities, so we definitely have to reduce them as to what goes and what stays, I don't know. But the bigger issue is, is that we're trying to really build an urban flavor project. And, you know, fifty-five feet, which is what the height that the buildings are now, isn't, is really mid-rise. It's not even a high-rise type of building. And so it really changes the scope of the project. It changes the prestige that it's gonna have. It's gonna turn it into, you know, a nice but very prototypical project you'd see in any other community. And although we can make that work, if that's the council's final decision, it's gonna be a lesser project in our mind, and I would think yours as well.
All right, thank you. So leading from that to, I just want to thank Councilmember Wade for your passion. That's really great hearing from somebody who lives there. I live just down the road in Homestead, so I do see some of the issues, maybe not to the extent that you do since you live there. But get to, a couple questions. Given the fact that if it stay, if, if the zoning is not changed today, and it remains what it is, it could eventually be developed into something that creates eighteen thousand trips versus the five thousand seven hundred trips. So for you, is it a matter of the five-story buildings, or the fact that there's residential potentially there at all?
My concern goes to the public safety as well. Are we in fact creating a situation where there is too much density, there are too many travelers on that road, whether it be residential or commercial? Then I think that's, that's, that's my, my basic concern about that. The aesthetics of it, the way the building looks and whatever, I mean, certainly, they could probably make it look pretty nice, but five stories just doesn't appeal to me, doesn't appeal to me, I can't speak for everyone else. But I think that's, that's the issue from public safety.
So I'm trying to decide, is it a matter of the five story or, and the residence, the multifamily, or is it a matter of just the five story?
I think it's a matter of the five stories, for me.
Okay, if the project were not doable because of the fact that if it goes down to three stories, the amenities can't stay, and you end up with a apartment complex similar to the one we already have, or similar to the one that's going out on two thirty-eight where you don't have all those amenities, it's a completely different project, does that alter your thinking just because now they're all three-story buildings?
Certainly, I don't want to get in the way of the developer, you know, developing a project that they have some security with it, that they're gonna produce a quality product for the citizens in the community, and it's gonna be a reasonable price, you know, so that people will be able to afford that. After all, that's the reason why we're doing multifamily, is to try to create a price point that people can afford in order to continue to live here in, in Maricopa.
Right. So we heard from the developer that if we went down from five buildings to three buildings, it eliminates a lot of the amenities.
It'd be maybe not totally vanilla, but it would probably be getting to that point.
Thank you.
And marketing-wise, that would be in the eyes of the person who would want to live there.
Vice Mayor.
Dennis, can I ask a question? Dennis? Question for you. What we're voting on today between the resolution and the ordinance, are we voting on if it can go to five stories?
No, you're just voting on.
PAD, I thought, has seventy feet.
You're going on the general plan amendment that goes to mixed use for the whole part of it, and a PAD.
So the PAD has the five.
Oh, it does, yeah, the PAD has.
Just making sure.
That dictates the amount of units that are being proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Marsh.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Hold on. The PAD dictates the number.
A final design plan will come forward, but tonight you do address height as well.
So we address height, but we don't, we're not addressing five stories or three stories. We're addressing the number of units. So if we, if the.
You're addressing at a maximum allowable height as well.
But allowable height is seventy, correct?
Right, and projects planned at fifty, fifty-five.
That's true.
So if we approve it today, in, in the way it is sitting right now, we're approving that they can go to five stories?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Marsh.
Mayor Price announced that he's resigning soon to join the Maricopa Economic Development Authority Association. And he's gonna have a hard time selling big companies on coming to Maricopa if we don't have enough apartments where their employees can live. We need these apartments.
Just to clarify, this is not part of the public hearing, so, you know, we would love to hear from you guys. Make sure to talk to us after this meeting and let us know. One of the things that I look at is, I don't want five stories, I don't want them, right? I mean, honestly, I don't. I've said it months ago, when it was proposed, I told city manager I didn't like the idea of five stories. I don't, I still don't like the idea of five stories. What I like, though, is irrelevant to what's legally allowed, right? And so it's hard. It's, it's a hard decision. And we, our role here is not to vote emotionally. That's not the, what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to vote based on, you know, the evidence before us, how it saves trips in and out of the area, how this is an upscale community. This is not, and no, no offense to people that live in the apartments across the street behind Walmart, this is not them, right? This is a more upscale apartment complex that's gonna cost a little bit more to live in. It has a lot more amenities to it, a lot more, it has a lot more of the, the amenities that people will pay for. So this is more, this is not a generic apartment complex. I kinda dislike a generic apartment complex more than I dislike five stories in an apartment complex. And I think the emotional, emotion part, when you, when you think about it, it, it makes more sense to be able to have more open space in an apartment complex than it is to crush in as many apartment buildings as possible, because you're lowering the height. Just take a look at the apartments on two thirty-eight, I've looked at them today, and they have three-story apartments there, but there's not a lot of space in between those apartments. I mean, I, it looks like you can reach out the window in one of them and touch the other building. And that's, that's because they're squishing in a lot of apartments that are three stories into that area. So I think the emotional part is, I, I don't like three sto, uh, five-story apartments. I grew up in the urban area. I don't want to see Maricopa be an urban area. I lived in Phoenix for a little while. I left Phoenix to come to Maricopa. I like Maricopa. And I like my single-family house where I am. I deal with a lot of the same traffic issues. I live in Maricopa Meadows, right? So I'm surrounded by three schools. Now, when I first bought my house, I thought it was the most beautiful thing in the world. My kids would be able to walk to school all the time, from kindergarten to high school. Unfortunately, the traffic is horrendous. So trying to get in and out of there at different hours that they go in. So they start at six AM all the way to nine o'clock in the morning, and then at, from two, four, two o'clock to four o'clock in the afternoon is traffic, it's crazy. So I understand traffic, I do, and getting in and out of school. You know, so I look at it, and we've addressed some of the police and fire issues, we addressed some of the public safety issues, we addressed that, yeah, the developer can do three-story home, uh, three-story buildings there, but it's going not, it probably won't be the complex that we want. And if you, I know, I heard some people scoff when, when Bob said, these are places, apartments where our future businesses that we're bringing to Maricopa, if it's a chip manufacturer, or whatever we bring, right? That these are apartments people are gonna be living in. And I see people shaking their head saying, no, they're not, right? But there's a place on the top of the three, I call it the top of the three forty-seven, it's called Price Corridor, right? And it's Intel, right? Everybody knows where Intel is. It is surrounded by apartments, and in those apartments are people that work at Intel. Some of them live here, some of them live in million-dollar homes up in Chandler and Gilbert, but a lot of them live in apartments, right? Because they're out, just out of college, right? And they're not buying a half a million dollar house. So the, what we want to bring to Maricopa, which is jobs, what we want to bring to Maricopa is commercial. We want to bring that here, and we need diversified housing. And this is upscale apartments, and then we have the other apartments that will go in that are not upscale, more market rate apartments and things like that. So, yeah, I came into our meeting today thinking I was gonna vote no, and I was thinking to myself that, you know, five story, let them, let them build in three. I was thinking that. And they'll put the same amount of apartments in, the same amount of transportation, the same amount of people, but they're not gonna be the same amount, the same apartments. They're not gonna be the same people in those apartments that are paying for those two thousand dollar rents, or whatever the heck this is gonna be, because of the amenities that are there. These are higher-scale apartments. So, yeah, let's continue and go from there.
Thank you. Do you have a comment, Councilman Wade? Go ahead. Please proceed. Please.
Counselor, comment? Without the emotions of being emotional, just being practical.
Talk loud until it comes on the.
Being practical, just being practical.
Doesn't mean that it's wrong or right. The emotions are there because I've seen kids almost get run over. I've gone, I live in that area, I drive, I walk around that area every day, and I see the hazards that come about. And I think that if there is a way to avoid some of that, then we should take action to be able to do so, to avoid some of that.
I truly understand. My daughter was run over on the three forty-seven, walking across the street by Circle K. I understand it.
In an area.
I've lived in traffic, in, in the schools, and people walking around, so I've seen it. So I look at it, and having folks in those apartments that are working in the city of Maricopa, hopefully, when Mayor Price has a job as a meter director or president, right, and it brings more industry to our, 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 our area, those people won't be on the three forty-seven, that would be the hope, right? And, and I look at, it can help traffic, because if we put, if, not we, because we don't build any, right? We don't build apartments, we don't build commercial, right? So if we, if we leave it the way it is today, and there's a Lowe's in there, and four or five restaurants, and I don't know, whatever, right? And a couple, a bunch of other commercial goes in there, there's more traffic.
It's worse.
And it's throughout the day, the whole day, more traffic. So when the kids are coming home from school at two forty-five, there's drivers around where, as if it's apartments, some of those drivers will be at work at two forty-five in the afternoon when the kids are getting out of school. So it's still, I, I look at the traffic, and that's a wash, when we, when, even if it's three story or five story, the traffic issue's a wash, because it's the same amount of people, right? Because they're not gonna put less apartments in because we knock it down, right? So it's the same amount of people, the traffic's the wash, the public safety's a wash, because it's the same amount of people regardless. So now it's just aesthetics, right? It's, I don't like that building. And that's just the emotion part, right? Because everything else is a wash. Public safety's a wash, the transportation's a wash, in terms of the people. Because if it's three story or five story, the same amount of people are living in that area, they're just gonna leave it more to go to the park instead of using the amenities there. They're gonna leave it more to go to Copper Sky, or go to Pocana Park, or go to Copper Sky to go swimming because there's a smaller pool, or the pickleball courts that, you got pickleball courts, I think I read? Because the pickleball courts, they'll be driving to Copper Sky to use them instead of staying in their own complex. So in reality, five stories is less traffic than three stories, because they stay in and they do use the amenities there. So the emotion part, I'm, believe me, I came in today, asked a couple people, I've said, I'm not voting for five stories. I said it when I walked in.
You did.
And, but for me, you know, I'm hearing that I'm wrong, and I'm okay to admit when I'm wrong. I am.
And, and as I stated before, even started talking, that this is probably the first time, it is the first time that I have on record.
I was surprised.
That we didn't do seven and oh on, on the decision, and we haven't made a decision yet. We haven't voted as of yet, so there's still time for you to maintain what you were planning on doing in the first place. But let's, let's move on and have a glass of lemonade a little bit later to talk about it.
Thank you, counsel, for your comments. I think I'll add my voice to the mix at this point. You know, I want to address the very first, you know, and if you, I don't mean to call you out, but actually mean to answer your question, so please forgive me. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but, but Susan, you said something in the beginning. You said that you felt as though we had our minds made up. I, I hope that what you've seen out of this actually is that that's not the case, and maybe you haven't. But, but the reason is, is I can only tell you what, what I do. And the reason is, is that you hired me to do a job, and that job was to find a balance and to peel away the layers, okay? We have some very complex issues here. We have traffic, we have student safety, we have growth, we have apartments, we have homes, we have people, we have the reality of where people are gonna continue to move into the city. We have something called by right. I don't know if anyone paid attention to that little word, but by right is really, really an important word. And that is, is that the zoning, as approved by the voters, by right, has a way to be able to put what they want there within that zoning and obliterate your concerns altogether. So what I want to say to you right now is, is I fret over these decisions. I think about them constantly. I look at what other cities are doing, and I know that we're not other cities. We are uniquely Maricopa. I keep that in mind every single day. I know where we came from, I've lived here for eighteen years. I know where we've came from as a small town, and I know where we're going as a, as a large city. And I'm trying to figure out the way to balance those issues. And when I come to the dais, I come with an open mind, I come with the ability to be persuaded by both the audience and by my fellow council members. And yet, my job is to sit in meeting after meeting after meeting and find out all of the things that are going on in this world, and all the things that are happening at the state level, like Councilmember Smith just pointed out, how there is a bill that is coming back that will obliterate our ability to have any of this that just happened tonight, it will be gone forever. And, and the reason and rationale is at the national level. be gone forever. And, and the reason and rationale is at the national level, there is another bill that is trying to go through Congress right now that obliterates the state's abilities to say, down to the municipalities, you have zero right to state from a zoning perspective what you want. Because the need for attainable or affordable housing, for the housing complexes that need to be positioned are, we're gonna do what we want. Now, I don't know if that's gonna pass, but I can tell you that each year it gains traction. And each year it's getting closer and closer and closer to passage. We, this, it is bipartisan. So it is coming from both Republicans and Democrats in Congress. It's coming from Republicans and Democrats at our state level. And so we take zoning very seriously here because it's voter-approved. Now, we have the ability in a voter-approved referendum such as this is that this is what is called a living trust, okay? And in a living trust, if you know anything about trusts, they can be changed while you're alive. And so the things that you may have seen is also really important because not only is there a by-right issue, but there's also an issue by which this trust sometimes needs to be changed based on what the outside world is telling us. You know, it's, it's really interesting to see that, that in theory, some of us today have said we would rather see commercial here that generates thousands of more car traffic trips here because we want Home Depots, but we're willing to look past all the safety issues there? I don't, I don't know if that, that matches up. That doesn't seem to go in accordance with one another. Now, I know that we have to peel back the layers. I think that what the city manager just said, and what I'm sure we'll hear from our chief of police in a little bit, is that we can fix some of these safety issues. We can certainly attempt at fixing some of them, right? Through additional crosswalks, through more volunteers, through dealing with what we can in the, in the, in the charter schools, et cetera. But that's a separate issue. The fact of the matter is growth is coming, and it's coming whether you like it or not. And it's going to keep coming here because we are a victim of our own success. Ron, you talked about past presentations. A presentation I wish all of you were here for about two, maybe four weeks ago, was a presentation that was given talking about the amount of jobs and the amount of people that are locating to this state on a regular basis. And they're coming to the Phoenix metro area to which we are a part of. And they are zoning in and they're finding what you all have found, a piece of the American dream that they absolutely adore, and they want it too. And so they're coming here and they're demanding of the builders, build more. And we're also seeing the commercial side of it say, hey, I wanna be here, but I don't wanna be there. Well, commercial dictates where they go, not us. So one of the other sides of the, uh, the importance of, we talked about by right, is what is the highest and best use for a given property? A highest and best use is dictated not only by the city and by the public, but it's also by those that own the property. It's also by the zoning. It's also by those who wish to develop. And if there are people that wish to develop here and not there, it's their right to do so. So I wanna read to you a synopsis here that was recently given to us as part of the budget that I think sums it up really well. And it says, "The past two years have seen rapid change and a challenging environment. Yet the citizens of Maricopa have persevered, and so has their government, led by the proactive direction of our elected body and exercise managed by qualified staff. COVID aside, the city continues to grow, and with growth comes its own challenges. These next years will see significant residential, retail, medical, office, and entertainment venue growth, coupled with increased capital projects to accommodate transportation, utilities, public service needs, et cetera. It will be a period of inconvenience from time to time." Now, I wanna stop right there for a second. One of the natures of growth is that we do this. Anyone here remember the recession? In the recession, one of the things we found is we expanded and we contracted. And then we expanded again beyond where we started before the contraction took place. That is the way cities and towns across all of America grow. And when you look to come out of a recession, the first thing people do is they look for existing development pads. They look for existing home, uh, warehouse space. And once those are filled, you have to add more. You have to continue to grow. Man, Councilmember Manfredi or Vice Mayor mentioned something interesting, and I wanna, I wanna touch on, you know, what Glen Wild is going through. Once again, I wanna tell you, I hear you. I hear what you're saying. And despite what you may think, I absolutely understand. I travel that road between fifteen and twenty times a day, from all different angles through and around Glen Wild, for school pickups, for meetings I have to attend, for just general watching the area, especially knowing this was coming to the agenda, okay? Number, number two, Councilmember Manfredi and I live in the Meadows, okay? We've lived in the Meadows before Glen Wild was even as, attempted to be Glen Wild, okay? There was nobody that lived in Glen Wild. It was a dirt lot. And guess what? Everybody came to the Meadows to take their kids to the high school. And then Copper Sky got built. If I want to get out of my house at any of those key times, just like you have to deal with, I have to plan my schedule around or deal with the traffic. Now, it's hard when the entire city of Maricopa came toward one high school. And by the way, there's two other major developments planned for that area, and all of them come up one of two roads. And then all of that merges into one road, the three forty-seven, to head north. So I understand exactly what you're going through, completely, one hundred percent what you're going through. And I've had to deal with it on a daily basis for the last eighteen years. Now, interesting enough, another high school has emerged. Two high schools have emerged. Three high schools are emerging, and that is starting to spread out. Glen Wild is going to go through the exact same iteration as all expansions and contractions do. They are going to suffer for a while, and as it continues to move to the outskirts, more things will come online. I want to keep reading to you. It says, "It will be a period of inconvenience from time to time, followed by an enhanced quality of life and a more holistic community environment." Well, I wonder how that can be unless we see progress. "There is resolve in our city council, staff, and community to anticipate and adapt to the changing circumstances we are facing. Our commitment is firmly rooted in a strong record of accomplishment and the successful navigation of uncertain times." This is not new. We have dealt with this many times before, and we will deal with it many times afterwards. But I wanna focus on something in the budget, just to hound on the point of public safety. It says, and, 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 uh, and infrastructure. Operating budget is sixty million dollars this year, okay? The budget also represents capital projects expenditures over a hundred and twenty-eight million. Sixty percent, or fifty-nine percent, sixty percent of this expenditure is in support of street infrastructure. Now, we also have another challenge right now. What's going on around Glen Wild? Is there any construction going around at all? Honeycutt, White and Parker, Smith, Inc., Porter, okay? This is going to continue to happen until those roadways are in and fully functional, until they are, have the ability to be completely uninhibited. It reroutes traffic. I know that folks that live in the villages that used to sit on this council talked about the inconvenience of everybody coming down through the villages when we built the additional, um, uh, uh, commercial there, right there by fries, as well as the additional, uh, traffic that was on Honeycutt because of the road closure to expand the road. This is the temporary inconvenience we speak of. This is all part of the plan. It has to be. We cannot get through it if we don't continue to expand. We cannot add more infrastructure if we don't suffer the pain of going through it. So to the residents of Glen Wild, I say, I understand. I hear you. But I also understand there's a bigger picture in mind, and we're trying to get there as quickly as we can. And when you dedicate sixty percent of a hundred and twenty-eight million dollar budget to nothing but roadway infrastructure, that helps alleviate those issues. But you cannot get to the bigger muscle without going through the pain of going to the gym first. You cannot expand additional streetways and byways until you build them. And you cannot build them if you do not have dollars that come from both expansion of things such as this particular project while simultaneously proving that this project is declining the ultimate traffic impact. Now, at the same time, where do we draw the line, counsel? Where do we draw the line? I ask you that because we talk about this one particular twenty-five acre site in a rezone tonight. But we had the testimony from the audience that Porter is the main road up. That's a true statement. But are there any subdivisions slated for south of the railroad tracks? They're going to use Porter too. Do we stop them? And do we keep going down? Do we keep going down? Where do you draw the line? And so I ask that because, again, those developments are responsible, they're held responsible to help build those street improvements when they come online. Take the photograph of this city in two thousand and two. How many roads do you drive on today were here in two thousand and two that were not dirt? Almost all of them were dirt, and they did not do what they do today. It is the fact that your homes were built that indicated not only did it provide dollars in the form of development impact fees, which we addressed earlier, but it also provided the fact that the developer had to help pay for the infrastructure. And that infrastructure that, those dollars that we get is also going back to infrastructure. That is how you expand. You cannot have one without the other. You know, in thinking about what I was gonna say, I, I wanted to ask you by raise of hands, you, I heard it as testimony. We said, I want more Home Depots. I want more restaurants. I want more industry here. You cannot have it without more people, period. Now, people say all the time, well, why does Casa Grande have it? Well, Casa Grande's a hundred-year-old city. They've gone through this contraction and expansion a million times. We've done it twice. Because we're an eighteen, nineteen-year-old city. The challenge is, is that we've grown so hyper-fast that you have gone through cycles in times in which most people live in a city that in their fifty years there before they pass on, they will see one cycle, maybe two. You've seen two or three in a ten-to-twenty year period, and you will see probably three or four more in the next coming decade. This is the way it works. You hired me to do this job to tell you how this works. Now, again, we don't always like it. If I had my druthers, I would keep it the same small town I moved to eighteen years ago, and it would be exactly the same way.
With no Lowe's.
But with no Lowe's and no, anything else. No Ace Hardware, none of that stuff. No overpass, no nothing. But I have to say to myself, and I have to look at the facts, that with evolution comes change. Change is hard. Change is scary. But we can deal with those problems. From the safety perspective, we will deal with that. We have a plan in place now. It won't be perfect, but we will keep working at it. We'll keep chipping at it, and we'll keep working it until we get it as best as we can. We will add more sidewalks. We'll add more, uh, crosswalks. We'll add more police. We'll add more of those things. They come on, bike lanes, et cetera. They will come on board as we continue to expand. They have to. If they don't, then we fail to do our job. But we also can't stand back and say, we're not going to approve things that, that have a sensible reaction by which we are actually finding the highest and best use. By using and making sure that we're operating in the fact that the by-right will be far worse off for us than other avenues that we have to deal with. So, again, I've tried to understand. I've tried to find the balance. I've tried to put myself in your shoes, and I hope you put yourself in mind. Because this is what I have to do. I have to find that balance. And I promise you that you will not go through this forever. Because guess what? Where Porter is today as a main road, it will not be the artery you see it today in the next ten years. It just won't. Because there will be other arterials around it. There will be other overpasses. And I talk about this from a place of absolute knowledge. Because as Councilmember Manfredi and I live in the, in the Meadows, uh, we have two, almost what, four thousand, five thousand homes planned for an area right next to us, and we have two ways out. And south is Copper Sky, and try doing that during events. And, uh, north is, uh, is, is the, uh, is the high school. And guess what? It all merges into three forty-seven, one, at one exit. Do you think that we won't have to suffer more than you all at that point for the fact that, because the overpass will not be there long before most of the houses are? Okay? This is the ebb and flow I, I speak of. Now, I think City Manager nailed it on the head when he said, "At the end of the day, we all have to do our part," okay? I think we'd played ours originally. We're gonna play it again. You guys are doing yours now. And I think that's the, all we can ask for. But I will say this finally, in closing, I understand the height issue. It's something that is something that I've wrestled with. But I need to tell you also something that is also happening at the national and even the state level. Currently, we all live in the West. And in the West, we have lots of land, and we believe in spreading out. Houston is the only place I've ever lived where I've driven two and a half hours and never left the city limits, okay? Straight across, huge city, okay? It's enormous. It's all spread out. However, I went to something called the Mayor's Institute for City or Urban Design in twenty nineteen, or right before the pandemic hit. And in there, it was, I was with a group of, and I'm not trying to be political here, but there's a very liberal school of thought there. But what I took from it was not that it was conservative or, or liberal. What I took from it was an understanding that due to environmental issues, due to the fact of, um, increased competition through sense of place, through all these types of things, that you can maintain your uniqueness of place as a small city, yet create walkable urban designs, things with high amenities, high tailored differential. We talked about what was plainly vanilla here. I think one of the fears we often complain about, that we don't like about apartments, is they're gonna turn into something we don't like. Then let's not allow it to be the standard. Let's build it beyond, beyond the standard so that it's something that's attractive to, to, to the people we want to live there. So I don't think we wanna be vanilla. I think we wanna be exceptional. I think that's what we demand of our city. I think that's what we demand of our, of our building codes. I think that's what we're gonna demand of this particular project. So when I understand both sides of the issue, when I understand everything in between and everything in the middle, I see that peeling back the layers, there are problems we can solve. But when it comes down to this particular zone, in this particular zoning, I see that we are curbing the by-right. We are stating to both our state level and our federal level people that this is where zoning should stay, at the municipal level, and not be given carte blanche from a level that never hears from you all, that never listens to those concerns, that never tries to deal with them because they're just gonna walk over us. And it is a powerful statement to be able to go to them and say, we've had meetings like this. We've listened to the people. We've listened to the developer. We've tried to balance this out. We've solved the problems as we've peeled back the layers. And finally, I think that this zoning is something that we have to, we have to move forward. Because if we don't, then what is there currently zoned completely obliterates the arguments of our people in the audience. They do not want more traffic. They do not want more trips there. They do not want an increased, uh, lack of safety. How can we leave it as a by-right then? Because of by-right, you will get obliterated with that. And I just don't see that we're accomplishing and listening to the people if, if we do that. So to that end, I, I say that this is, this is where I think we're at. This is the answer for us. And, and to Bob's point, you know, this is what we've struggled with, and, and certainly I've struggled with over the course of, of the many weeks that I've been lamenting over these decisions tonight. Yes, Councilmember Witten?
Lesson learned, I think, from my perspective, you know, share it, is we listen, as you said, in your final statement, we listen. If not having to have the opportunity to be able to do that, then we would not be doing our job. It is our job to step forward and to make, and to, and to not go along if that's not where you are. And that's for the benefit of the people we serve, for the benefits for ourselves, and for the fact that we've worked together so long on so many different issues and are able to come up with an agreement for the most part. I'm not changing, so this would be one of those times where it doesn't. But at least we did listen. We gave the opportunity to do this.
Thank you. Uh, lots been said tonight. Is there any further, uh, questions or statements that need to be made on this particular issue on item, excuse me, flip the page here, uh, item eight point four. If not, I would accept a motion. Yes, Councilmember Smith?
Second.
Uh, there, there's a motion?
I said, I will motion.
Yes, I didn't expect a second. So go, go ahead with the motion.
Um, be, and the reason I say that is because I think it's vitally important, City Manager, that we take seriously the school driving problem. And I know you take that wholeheartedly. I do not want to have to address this issue again in the future. We've already had it one conversation before. And, um, I just want us to take it very, very seriously because I think it does end, um, potentially a lot of the concerns. But because of the fact that I cannot support eighteen thousand trips, um, because of the fact that I do not want a vanilla complex going in there, and by the way, um, the majority of it is already zone mixed use. They could put up three-story apartment buildings, vanilla flavor, right now because of the way that it's zoned. I'm going to motion to approve this item.
So there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any further discussion on this particular item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
So with the vote of five ayes and two nays, uh, the item passes.
Who's the second nay?
Councilmember Vidiello. Okay. Thank you very much. That takes us to ordinance. This is ordinance twenty-two dash eleven. The ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Maricopa, Arizona, approving and adopting the amendment to the city's zoning map to rezone approximately twenty-five point three acres of land generally located in the northeast corner of North Porter Road and West Applegate, road just north of Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway. Again, don't need to read the whole thing. This is the ordinance, so, uh, without further ado, I will go to a roll call on the ordinance.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Vidiello?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, nay.
Councilmember Learman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manfredi?
Vice Mayor Manfredi?
Can I say something quick? Yeah. I came in today thinking it was gonna be no on it, I voted yes because it makes sense. It's not an emotional vote, it's not an election vote, it's a vote basically because I truly do believe a hundred percent that I'd prefer to have a better facility than a vanilla facility. So yeah, my vote is yes.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
No.
Mayor Price?
Yes. And we had a motion and a second on that, correct? Okay. Did we have a motion and a second on that?
Not on the one.
Okay, we need to go back and redo that again. All right, so my apologies. So the ordinance is, is that we're doing a roll call, but I need a motion. There's a motion, do you second, like you did before? So there's the motion and the second, let's proceed with the reroll call.
Okay. Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Vidal?
No.
Councilmember Learman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manfredi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
No.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. By a motion of, or vote of five to two, the motion passes. That'll take us to miscellaneous item twenty-two dash fifteen. The Mayor and City Council shall discuss and possibly take action on adopting a tentative budget for fiscal year twenty-two dash twenty-three. This is fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, and the five-year capital improvement plan. This is for discussion and action. Council, at this time, I'm going to give to you the notion I did discuss with Legal, the fact that I do not have a conflict legally, but I'm going to declare conflict regardless. And I'm going to take my seat in the audience just because this budget does contain a contract with MITA in it, and I don't want to be seen as having participated in that in any way, shape, or form. So with that, I will declare conflict and remove myself and turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor. At which point, when you're done with this topic, would you call me back up, please? Thank you.
Next up is item eight point six. The Mayor and City Council shall discuss and possibly take action on adopting a tentative budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and the five-year capital improvement plan. This is for discussion and action, and go ahead.
Thank you very much, members of council. My name is Matt Kozlowski, I am the Director of OBM and the Chief Financial Officer for the City of Maricopa. And I will co-present this item with our Deputy City Manager, Benjamin Bitter, who will take you through some of our CIP items. I will go ahead and focus on our general fund operating budget and a few various items in my conversation. So, having said that, let's move into the proposed budget for FY twenty-two, twenty-three. The theme for this year's budget is Maricopa Elevated. When we talk about Maricopa Elevated, we talk about elevated opportunities, elevated challenges. That has been a discussion tonight. We talk about what is coming. We are no longer local, we are global. Global companies are looking at us. People from around the globe are looking at us as a place to live. So, we, as a city, must elevate our expectations as well. This budget is representative of the idea of our elevated expectations that we believe we must come through on. So, a few quick budget headlines and highlights. On April twenty-seventh of this year, the Budget and Finance Committee meeting took place where the budget is presented to that committee. That meeting took place for about ninety minutes. It was in-depth regarding all operating expenditures, CIP had been reviewed, and the budget books were presented to each member of council on April twenty-seventh as well. This tentative budget as presented will be posted to our city website and available for review no later than seven days from today. This year, no truth and taxation hearing is required. The reduction of our primary sales tax rate to four point one seven oh nine percent falls beneath the requirements for truth and taxation. And the FY twenty-three budget is representative of months of work, futures planning meetings, and the present possibilities identified by City Council and the city leadership team in that process. So, this process begins with those visionary meetings, the discussions that take place, and through an eight- or nine-month process, we arrive at our final budget. I can thank a lot of people for that at the end of the day. Council, city manager, city leadership, fellow executives, and a large network of staff that execute this at the end of the day. So, I stand here and I thank all of them for what they have done in putting this together. So, now let's move on and welcome you to Maricopa Elevated. There we go. I will read this from City Manager Rick Horst's budget transmital letter. "This year's tagline of Maricopa Elevated is a reflection of all the people, past and present, who have come here to seek a richer, fuller life, to seek freedom and peace, to seek opportunity and livability, and to let the prospect of the place shape their own independent aspirations. Let us give more and expect more as we seek to become one of the premier cities in Arizona." The first slide will focus on a section of City Manager's letter. "The city remains committed to lower taxes, and we again lower both the primary and secondary tax for the city of Maricopa. The secondary property tax levy reduction is reducing by four basis points, and the primary property tax is reducing by twenty basis points. This will represent a total of twenty-four basis-point reduction to our property taxes for our citizens." The chart on the far left, we look at this from a dollars perspective for a second. The primary property tax for FY twenty-two was fourteen point seven million. The assessed property growth of the city increased that by one point three million year-over-year. About fifty percent of that assessed property growth is in the form of new construction, and the other fifty percent is in property growth valuations from the city growing and the value of our property being higher. In that process, the proposed property tax reduction will give back seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars of that growth to our citizens arriving at a proposed primary property tax number of fifteen point three million for the year. Like Derek said, this is a little sticky. This is our general fund revenues over expenditures. We have a three-year snapshot here real quick so we can look at what we have experienced as a city historically. As we see, we have been relatively strong at retaining our operating expenditure balance, but growing the city's revenues over those past three years. Year-over-year, the revenues represent a twenty-four point five percent growth from last year, while only an eleven point two percent growth in our operating expenditures. Now, we'll notice that revenue over expenditures is about seventeen million dollars. Well, that is not for profit at the end of the day. Over to the left here, we can see that we have a twenty-million-dollar transfer to government CIP. Okay? This was the old one?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, good. Well, this is probably my last presentation prior to July first. You can call me Mike out of nostalgia if you'd like. No, no, no. Matt, Mike. I'm gonna have to just not call you Mayor anymore, that's gonna be really weird for me. We good now? LaSalle, we good? The true hero of budget is our Budget Manager, LaSalle Blancarte. Yes. Moving on to our projected revenues, when we talk about that seventy-seven million, I like to focus on the concept of growth feeding growth for a second, right? When we talk about the growth from sixty-two to seventy-seven million, let's focus on how that happens. Eight point two-six million of that is local sales tax, right? Our local sales tax is mostly driven by construction at the end of the day. Forty to fifty percent of our sales tax revenue is on a monthly base for construction, right? So growth, quite literally in this case, feeds growth because the local sales tax growth is new construction and our new residents and new citizens spending inside of our city. So, in addition to that, our intergovernmental revenues, which are state revenues and urban revenues of seven point nine-seven million, these come from population growth. These are driven by census numbers at the state level. So, again, growth feeds growth. And as we see, these represent the entirety of where this growth comes from. That property tax growth is just based on new construction with the rest going back to our citizens. And we are actually projecting a slight decrease in some of our licenses, fees, and permits, mostly out of conservative nature because we have been on such a torrid pace, we want to be careful. Okay. Now, for the general fund budgeted expenditures, last year's budget tagline was, "We continue to do more with less." And if we focus on our growth here, one of the things that we, as city leadership, have been incredibly focused on is responsibility and accountability to our operating expenditures. Year-over-year, we are projecting a slight decrease in our operating expenditures in a much more costly environment, in an environment where we have to be remarkably competitive. This speaks to our ability and our commitment to continuing to do more with less as City Manager Horst has challenged us to do as leaders, right? So the vast majority of our expenditure growth is on talent and personnel at the end of the day. So, when we talk about investing in talent, that is one of the most important things we can do as an organization at this point. On the left, we see that operating budget by department. Vice Mayor Manfredi, as you said earlier, police, fire, dispatch, emergency management. This represents the vast majority of our operating budget expenditures. How that six million dollars increase happens is represented on the right. Salary increases, including newly negotiated MOUs, new personnel requests. Every personnel request, except one, is dedicated to public safety, public works, or development or engineering services. So those are our growth areas at this point. So we are committed to the right areas and making sure that we are fiscally responsible everywhere else. Health insurance, of course, in a COVID era, this is a real cost for every organization, and it's something that we have to commit to as well. And then a small chunk for overtime benefits, retirement, things of that nature. So, now, operating budget is fun, but CIP, investments, infrastructure, is a far more entertaining conversation than I could possibly offer or sing or dance for any of you. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ben Bitter and let him take you from here down to the home stretch.
Thanks, Matt, and good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. Our CIP has already been discussed tonight. It's gonna be about a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars. And as, again, has been discussed, it's going to require a lot of patience. These projects are things that can transform and will transform our community over this year, this coming year, as well as the years to come following that. So, we don't wanna go through all of them. If you have specific requests from what you've looked at already, then we'll go through those. But what we really wanna do is give an overview and then a sample of some of the types of projects that we do in the community. So as mentioned previously, fifty-nine percent of the hundred and twenty-eight million dollars that's programmed for the capital improvement plan is for streets, infrastructure. That can be anything from traffic signals to roads, to widening of roads and that type of thing, expanding of plans. There's buildings, water infrastructure, parks and recreation, land acquisition, economic development. All of those types of projects are part of our capital improvement plan. There we go. So, an idea of where we get the funding for all this. Obviously, a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars is a huge number for the City of Maricopa, by far the largest amount we've ever budgeted for capital projects. So how are we going to do that? Many communities, as you look at our neighboring cities, might issue bonds to do that. We are doing this without bonds. This is not an extra debt for our citizens, this is not something we are piling on, but this is something that we are using both through our reserves that we have built up over the past few years, as Matt has mentioned, and then as well through new funding that comes to the community. So as you look at this, you see that first column, transportation impact fee. Just to distinguish what you're looking at, the yellow is effectively new projects or projects that we've added this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year. And the blue is projects that we haven't been able to complete in the current fiscal year that will be moving forward. So between the two, we get thirty, about thirty-four million dollars of projects that we're using from the transportation impact fee fund. So when developers come in, again, as discussed earlier, they pay for a development impact fee. We're going through a study right now to increase those fees. And over the course of the next year, we'll go through that process and see what the results of the study bear forth. But those fees are put into an account which we can use for transportation-type projects. And down the line, you'll see general government CIP, that's typically general fund revenue that we're dedicating specifically to the projects.
Ben, if I could interrupt for a minute, a question was asked earlier about, why don't we just raise fees? Now, the development fees are highly restricted and regulated under law. And as you know, it's about a year-long process, and I think it requires five or six public meetings to do that. But it's not arbitrary, it's based on infrastructure, IIP, infrastructure improvement plan that has to be put together based on need and a whole lot of things and what you can build within a certain timeframe. It's a lot of statute, and so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, first, our fees are probably on par or higher than most communities because most communities, their infrastructure is built out, ours is not. And secondly, you know, these do come from developers paying their fair share coming in. It is not, as Ben indicated, it's not being paid for with tax dollars, and it's not being paid for with bonds.
Thanks. Yep.
City Manager, could you also address the possible confusion? Ron, I think you're the one that made this comment, where the City of Phoenix might impose a ten-thousand-dollar impact fee, and the City of Maricopa only a thousand on a home. Like, is that possible, or?
Well, it's possible, but impact fees are based on a legal definition of need. And if you're in a downtown situation, and I can't speak to Phoenix particularly, but if they have to, you know, rebuild entire, for instance, to blow out of the pipeline that just occurred on I-60.
Sure.
You know, these are mega projects. And, you know, we develop this new infrastructure, but they still have to do it. It has to be in their IIP plan in order to do that. So if they did raise their fees, they went through the same process. But we can't just arbitrarily say, wouldn't it be nice if we just charged ten thousand more? We have to equate that back to a legal premise. Otherwise, the home builders' associations and the developers' associations and all those other people would sue us, and we would lose, and...
Right, thank you, I appreciate that additional information. And if we need to, we can talk later, Ron, but I appreciate that additional...
The statute is very thick on this particular topic.
So the only other one I wanted to hit on this slide is the grants CIP line item. That one is probably the most stark difference from last year to this year. Obviously, with the passage of the bipartisan infrastructure law or the Infrastructure Jobs Act, whatever you wanna call it, there are lots of opportunities for cities, states, counties, et cetera, to receive federal funding for projects. We plan on aggressively going after those funds over the course of the next five years. If we do not have a item or a holder in our budget to receive those funds and then spend them, we wouldn't be able to spend the funds. And so what we've built into this grant CIP item is specific capacity so that if we were to receive a grant, and we're trying as hard as we can to get those grants, we'll be able to spend that money, recover the money back from the federal government to spend locally here within the City of Maricopa. So, that's our goal, and we wanted to make sure that that capacity is...
If I just give a couple of quick examples, we have a nineteen-million-dollar request in at the state level for improvements on 238. I think it's one point three for the pedestrian bridge to help kids get safely to the high school and a number of other projects. So, again, it's just to build the capacity, because you remember when the American Rescue Act happened before? Everyone said, "How do we spend it? This is against the law." So we had to build in the capacity. You might recall, we went to the state legislature and asked them to amend the law, and they said capacity's the way to do it, and we didn't get the legislative to support to do it the way we felt it should have been done. Although, all ninety-one cities supported it.
So, again, just to hit on some of the types of projects, these are kind of representative of what we have. There's new streetlights, there's new roadways, roadway expansions, new plans, including development impact fee study, et cetera. New parks, new buildings, and then beautification as well. So we'll just take you through real quickly an example from each of these. Again, if you have questions on other specific CIP requests, by all means, we can hit those as well. One item in the budget is the traffic signal on Smith-Inkey at Chase or Homestead. That project is moving forward. Recently, we completed the reconstruction and expansion of Smith-Inkey in that area. Now it's ready to move forward with a traffic signal. So we've completed the design of that and hope to... So, we've completed the design of that and hope to be moving to construction here in the coming months, assuming we can get the materials onboard, so. The new roadway, this one is one of the examples also of grant money that we've been able to obtain. So, this is not local money that we are spending, but money that we've been able to receive through Maricopa Association of Governments. This is to pave Anderson Road and Petersenall Road. Right now, it's a dirt road, and obviously, every time we have dirt roads, it increases the amount of dirt within the air, increases the air pollution, and causes health impacts as well as monetary fines if we don't remedy those situations. And so, we're actively pursuing all options that we can to pave roads within our community, and this is a prime example, Anderson Road by the Hickman Farm. A roadway expansion, as we talked in council, I believe, last month, will be participating along with ADOT. On ADOT's roadway, we are contributing local funds so that we can speed up the project. We can ensure that the project gets done, and we can ensure that we have a seat at the table to ensure that the project is done right. This is expanding the 347 within the city limits, adding new turn lane coming out of Lakeview and then heading northbound to the city limit. So, we will be working on that in the coming year as well. An example of one of the plans is the green road bypass and loop design. While we largely have a basic design here, there's a lot of process that we're going to be facing here as we move forward, hoping to find an alternate route, not just for our local traffic, but also, and perhaps more especially, for the truck traffic that comes through town. We think that as we can divert that truck traffic that is heading out west on the 238, if we can detour that off of the 347 sooner, before we hit city limits, that it will have a net positive impact on our community, particularly at that Smith Inkey and 347 interchange or intersection. Example of a park is the Park at the Lakes. This has been under design and is nearing 100% completion for some new ball fields and park amenities within the Rancho El Dorado, the lakes at Rancho El Dorado subdivision. So, that will be moving forward again here in short order, moving forward. New building, obviously, this is a topic of great conversation. A new police department and dispatch facility, something that we have worked diligently with our architect on for many months. We're nearing completion of those architectural plans. Once those plans are complete, we will be able to provide them to the public where we will get bidders to provide their bid in terms of how to construct the facility. Very exciting project, something that we are obviously committed to our public safety entities and ensuring that we can respond to emergencies in the best way possible. And then, finally, beautification. We will continue making this the community that we all want it to be, making this the community of choice, making this the community where we can feel that this is a place that we really want to live. And that is through much of the landscaping. Some things may change, some of the areas may change. We may do this all around the community, but we are doing all that we can to beautify and enhance the community through right-of-way landscaping. And so, again, something that will continue to move forward. And then, as, you know, I joked with Matt a little bit this morning, and we're both Midwesterners, and I said, when I grew up in Michigan, that we always said that the state flower of Michigan was the construction cone. And I think that that is also relevant to both Rick's message as well as what Mayor Price has mentioned. It's something that we deal with, but it's also something beautiful. It signifies vibrant growth, brings in new neighbors, new businesses, new jobs, and a higher quality of life. And with that, that's how we get Maricopa elevated. So, with that, happy to answer any questions on CIP or otherwise.
Oh, my pleasure. Evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Council, and ladies and gentlemen that are still here. My name is Brian Ott. I just wanted to speak real fast on the budget that you proposed here. You're going to be voting tentatively on this. Having been a prior elected official and been involved in a city budget, this is, I have to say, this is probably one of the nicest budgets I think I've seen. Your fiscal year, it looks like you have $189 million for a total budget. Your operating budget of almost $61 million, with revenues of $77.7, I believe, and that leaves you a surplus of $16.8. That's quite remarkable. I mean, I have to say, good job. Your capital improvement budget was $129 million. Also, I wanted to thank, I'll just thank the council and the mayor because your proposed reduced rates for property values are $417.9 and $83.99 per 100,000 of assessed value. I think I have, I don't want to be miscoating you. Saving homeowners approximately $100 a year. That's a lot. Thank you for not raising our taxes. Very, that's very, that's very nice. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the, oh, the capital improvements budget. I believe someone had mentioned it already, about the 60% going towards street improvement. That's approximately $80 million for street improvements. That is incredible. That is what is needed. You guys are doing the job. The only other thing I wanted to possibly increase, to put my two cents in, is that I would like to see another $300,000 to $400,000 go into the $12.1 million for the police budget. I think it's important, public safety, I can't help it, being prior military. Public safety is a priority. It has to be. Especially with the growing of what's happening with our city. I think that's not too much to ask. I'll ask the chief how much his budget, how many police officers that was, new police officers that was going to be allowed. I, no matter what you ask for, I believe another two officers is always important. I think we should be able to do that with that amount of surplus. But anyway, that's my opinion. I'm not going to keep everyone here. And City Manager, you know what? You do a great job, and I'm really glad that you're here. I hope no one takes you away from us.
Thank you, Brian.
Matt, we'll let you wrap up, but very quickly on the public safety. In addition to the $27 million investment in a public police station and dispatch, we are adding four new officers. But I did, the public may not realize that we have ventured into a new realm of using non-sworn officers to address non-criminal activity, homelessness, citizens who might be walking the streets with mental issues, welfare checks, these type of things. So, we are dedicating some additional resources through our emergency management programs to address people who can deal with those issues to free up our officers to deal with the issues that they're actually trained for to do. So, I just wanted to get that on the record.
City Manager, anybody have anything?
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up, City Manager, because I listed the highlights from Vice Mayor Manfredi and myself serve on the Budget Finance Committee. And so, we get more detailed conversation, and I walked away with some really impressive things that I, if they weren't mentioned tonight, I wanted to make sure that I mentioned them because I'm very, very proud of this city in terms of being fiscally conservative. It's important when you think about how cities find themselves in trouble during recessions and whatnot. So, some of the things I wanted to brag about was definitely the four additional police officers and how we're using non-sworn people to take away some of the burden from police officers. So, that helps. If I, I'll call the police chief up here in just a second. One thing I'm really proud of, and you touched on it, I love it, is that the revenue is higher than the expenditures. That's huge in terms of understanding that, and it's really impressive. One thing you need to realize, and a lot of cities would take that revenue and put it into operating budget and use it as operating budget, which, if you think about it, operating budget is recurring year after year after year. But a big portion of that is actually construction sales tax, which is one-time, right? You sell a house one time, so you're collecting those additional taxes on the sale of a home. That's not recurring. So, you don't want to have a city who incorporates those, that piece of the revenue into your operating budget, and the City of Maricopa is not doing that. So, it's very, very important for you to understand that. I think it's hugely impressive that we have a city that's going in that direction. That usually means that when we end up in a recession time period, we're not going to end up with all the problems that cities who actually use those one-time fees for operating costs, we're not going to end up with that specific type of a problem. The estimates on revenue are conservative. That's another plus. When they take the approach at looking at the budget and the revenues and expenditures, the revenues that they estimated are conservative. I think that's very important. One thing I was really impressed with is the introduction, let me make sure I get this correct, business analysts that they've incorporated into the City of Maricopa. And what a business analyst does is it kind of looks at the city from a business perspective, which, how many cities or government entities do that? Not very many, right? But they're looking for efficiencies. An example of an efficiency is we now buy our own gas and save 25 cents a gallon, and you can well imagine that for all the transportation that happens within a city, that 25 cents adds up. But that, those types of efficiencies that they're looking for pays for their salary, pays for keeping expenses down. So, I was really, really impressed with that and felt like it was something that was definitely worth sharing with the public. And then, so lastly, Chief, would you mind coming up? I thought this was really cool, too, and I want to make sure I get this stat correct. With the additional four new police officers and the use of the non-sworn to handle areas where non-sworns can, it looks as though, if I remember, if I got the stats correct, where we were at in 2021, 0.85 police officers to 1,000 people, and we're currently in 22, expecting to be at 1.25 per 1,000. I wrote that down. Hopefully, I got it right.
Vice Mayor Manfredi, City Council.
Those are my stats, not his.
Those are what?
Those are my stats, not his.
Oh, those are your stats. Oh, he's looking at me. Where did I get those? I know I heard it. Okay, so maybe you want to clarify, but I'm sure the news is still good.
Absolutely, and I'll just comment on the fact of using non-sworn. And just like the City Manager said, we need, the police department's going to grow smartly along with the city. And if we can get the trained officers to where they're needed the most and then supplement, you know, the call service with non-sworn and also develop new employees that may become police officers later on down the road, I think it's a smart business.
Yeah. So, thank you. I appreciate that. I just think the city's heading in a great direction. I think being fiscally conservative is spectacular, and I appreciate the work of the City Manager and staff.
One more thing, Councilmember Smith, it might be worth a mention. In addition, we're working this year towards the new 311 service.
Right.
So, that would allow our dispatchers who may get calls that aren't really 911 to just quickly refer that over to 311 to address those issues, freeing up both dispatcher time and officer time as well. So, we hope, it'd probably take us the whole year to vamp that up and get it going, but we think that would be a nice addition. We do have our coordinator onboard, and she's on fire and doing a good job beginning to put it together. We will show you a good piece of that with our tour next week, how that can work, and so you get a better understanding of it.
Thank you.
So, I'm not sure whose stat this is, but I was curious, the influx of revenue that's coming in to the fund, is that also allowing for an opportunity for advancements within the current existing officers? In other words, there's promotions included there?
If I may, Chief, we, one of the things we're doing this year, too, is we're authorizing a new rank of corporal. Six, is that correct, Chief?
Six, yes, one in each squad.
Which allows some middle-management opportunity for upward movement, which also allows them to have, they'll be the field training officers, and they'll have opportunity to work in the capacity of a sergeant when the sergeants are out for various reasons. And Chief, you could probably talk more about it, so I should just let you do that.
Yeah, the corporal position, I'm excited about it. It creates, you know, an opportunity of advancement for officers to learn. Takes a little bit of work, a little off the sergeants, allows the sergeants to engage more in the field. It splits the administrative work there, so it's really something that, and really, it's a way to really legitimize, for lack of a better word, our field training officers. And really, that they are the knowledge base of the department. They're the trainers. They're the educators. It's critical that they're fully engaged, so it's, we're excited about it.
And was it a competitive basis to bring the corporals onboard, or how were they selected?
Yes, well, Commander Campbell's working through our process now.
Yeah, there, I would also add that, as you recall, through the MOU process with both our police and fire, but specifically towards police, as we're talking about that, that our pay for police officers is in the top 5% of the entire state, with only one or two cities topping our pay, which is still probably lower than it should be, but allows us to make sure we keep the best and that we don't have officers fleeing to other cities. Because you know there's huge turnover in a lot of these cities. And where we've had some, it's very minimal. And the turnover we have had has not been job jumping for the most part. It's been for retirement or injury or other reasons.
And finally, does Fire have similar opportunities?
Yes. Fire's also in the, one of the highest-paid in the state now, too.
Thank you very much.
We don't take that lightly. We, Queen Creek is comparable for us, but I, you remember, I think it's just one or two cities that are paying higher, and Scottsdale, for instance. You know, if I could very quickly, you know, you look at a city like Queen Creek. Their population is equal to ours a little bit more, but their daytime population is almost double. Ours drops down to about 34,000. Their total budget is like $470 million. Ours is $170. Their sales tax is $170 million. Ours is, what was it, $40 million? $28 million in sales tax. Yet, we have more officers than they do, and we're better paid than they do. And guess what? We have less crime. So, I think we're doing pretty good for a small city.
Yeah, I've been doing budgets on spreadsheets ever since the spreadsheets were invented by a classmate of mine at MIT, Frankston. And that was in the 1960s. I'm really impressed with the work you've done on this. This represents good conservative budgeting, good planning, good use of taxpayer funds while promoting growth, and that's a good balance. So, thank you for your hard work.
May I add one more thing? I apologize, Council, but may I add one more thing? When I got to the end of this budget year, you know, I have discretionary funds in my budget, which are mostly if a study or something comes up. As we got to the end of the year, I had some funds left over, and I opened up a grant opportunity to just the line personnel in both the police and fire departments. The command staff couldn't have any say in it, just asking them to submit grants of things they feel they would want or need to help them do their jobs. And I gave out five grants totaling $80,000, which includes some health and wellness issues, includes some rifle safety issues, includes some... includes some rifle safety issues, includes some protective gear issues, I can't remember what else it included, but the opportunity for the line personnel to actually request and submit their applications of what they think it would be needed. And I was a little surprised I didn't get more than what I got, but I think that just speaks well that all of our line officers had the opportunity to have a say and submit, and all of the, everything that was requested in this particular situation was granted.
Yes, just one more thing. I've thought long and hard about this, and it pains me to say that before we approve the preliminary budget, I really think we strongly ought to concern, consider removing the MTA partnership?
Oh, would you stop?
He missed it! He missed it entirely!
When they sit in the audience, they don't pay attention.
Oh, I'm just teasing.
I love getting fired before I've actually been hired.
Christian Price wants to rescind his resignation.
I'm just teasing for anyone who could, yeah. Did we already approve the resignation? I mean, we could take that back and take out this MTA partnership, and I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing. Thank you.
So she likes to do my jokes. I was actually going to pull his resignation and decline it in the consent agenda, but I didn't do that. So, anybody else? All right, so I'll finish up with it. You know, I serve, I've served on the Budget Finance Subcommittee here for years now, four, five years, I don't know how long it's been, but this has been one of the smoothest. Last year was smooth, this one got smoother, and it's getting better and better, and it just tells you the kind of people we have working for us today. It's amazing the way we can put together the budget, and we can, we can make sure that we stay within the parameters that we asked for as a council. You know, when Rick first came on years ago, one of the first things I told him is, we need to cut taxes every year. And what I mean by that is tax rates, right? We need to cut the tax rate every year. And for the past four years, we've cut the tax rate. So we've lowered the tax rates for four years in a row. The other years, we didn't raise them, we left them where they were for a couple of years there, because, you know, we were facing some other things. But when we look at it, the one-time money that's coming in, a lot of people see it, and they're like, well, let's use it on things. And we'll use it on some stuff, but it'll be one-time expenditures. It's things that we need to get done, that don't have a continuing operating cost, that doesn't have us sitting four or five years from now going, how are we going to pay for that? You know, the staff that we have, and, you know, Rick leading the way, looks for the inefficiencies, looks for ways to save money, and there's been plenty of examples of it. So, you know, just one of them is what Nancy mentioned, and she said, buying our own gas. The reality, the full explanation of that is, we have our own gas pumps for the city of Maricopa now, and we have those because Rick said, well, we can save a couple pennies, or a couple cents, by using our own pumps, buying the gas, and our police, our fire, our staff can go to those pumps and fill up, and we're buying it more of a wholesale cost than a retail cost. And instead of paying SAK and QT money, we're saving that money for the taxpayers. It's simple things, it's small things, and but when you take them and you put them all together, they lead us to be able to cut taxes and provide the services that people want. And you mentioned police. In the general fund this year, there has four police officers in it, and it does have something different, too, called the digital forensic investigator, and you can ask the chief about what it is, but it really does allow for us to allow the police to do the job that the police are supposed to be doing, that's protecting and serving, and not doing a lot of the paperwork of video stuff and things like that, that they shouldn't be doing. Makes sense. You know, with that, I guess, make a motion if somebody wants to.
So move.
We approve.
And a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? That's it.
Mr. Acting Chairman?
Oh, aye. I said aye.
Mr. Acting Mayor?
Yes.
I will leave it to your discretion to decide as a city council, but due to the lateness of the hour, if we'd like to put off the executive session until the next city council meeting, that would be fine. If you want to continue tonight, that would be up to you as well.
Well, we could call up the mayor back up and let him decide, too. But that part is over.
I'll leave that to...
No, I'm fine doing it, man.
I'll leave that to you to decide.
How much, how much time do we need to give?
We haven't had a 2:00 AM in a long time.
Yeah, it's true.
It's early.
And I know Dennis is looking for a 2:00 AM.
Aren't we glad we started at 6:00?
Counsel, it is 10 o'clock. What is your purview? Would you like to move the executive to the next one, or would you like to have it now? What, how much, how long do you think it'll go?
Based on how much you talk tonight, we might be there.
The next one it is!
I'll be simple with everyone.
I mean, I haven't heard Henry talk that much in years.
All right, it sounds like the prevailing consensus is we'll move it to the next agenda, if that's okay. So with that, any further items on the business that there seems to be none? So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So move.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying not all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. We'll stand adjourned for two weeks.